Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings. I am Councilman Kohari Mosley and I chair the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs. For this hearing, we will hear from the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh and the Urban Redevelopment Authority. I'd like to invite those from the Housing Authority to join us at the table. And while they are joining us, I'll ask our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, to give a brief overview of the department.
Thank you, Councilman. The Housing Authority is proud of the role it has as the premier provider of affordable and safe housing in the City of Pittsburgh for more than half a century. They provide numerous services to residents to help them achieve the goal of self-sufficiency. However, the primary service remains to supply safe and affordable housing. Housing Authority is governed by a Board of Commissioners. The Board is charged with the task of establishing goals, approving policy and budgets, and providing general direction to the executive staff. Currently, Councilman Kohari Mosley serves on the HACP Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Director McDevitt. And now, for the Housing Authority. Representatives who are here today, please introduce yourselves, including your title, then feel free to begin your presentation.
My name is Caston Binion. I am the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. And this is my staff, starting with...
Bernie McGinley, the Chief Financial Officer.
I'm Andy Tenney, the Controller.
Darnell Parker, Budget Manager.
Thank you all for joining us. You can begin your presentation.
Good morning, everyone. Today, we are presenting our 2026 fiscal year budget. We have a total budget of $224 million and a capital budget of $38 million. This represents a 6% increase from the 2025 budget, which was mostly, or if not all, Housing Choice Voucher Program increases is what we anticipate for 2026. This budget includes some additional capital dollars for developments at Bedford dwellings, Allagany dwellings, Northview, Christopher Smith, and also some money set aside for Garfield. At this time, I'll sign it back over to Mr. Binion if he wants to add anything.
Yeah, the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, our mission is affordable housing. Affordable housing consists of Housing Choice Voucher Program, also the Public Housing Program, and a mixed financial developments. Recently, the Housing Authority constantly engaged in building affordable housing throughout the whole City of Pittsburgh. We have been so successful, it's almost like every 90 days, we have a ribbon cutting or we have a groundbreaking. And that's because, you know, we have outstanding staff who work with the community and work with our Board to ensure that residents of the City of Pittsburgh is able to live in affordable housing. We also work with our residents as far as self-sufficiency. We have lots of programs so residents get the opportunity to get trained, get the opportunity to go to school, get the opportunity to help drivers train to participate in that program so they have a license to be able to get a job. We continue to work with our residents on self-sufficiency. As of this year, working with our partners of URA, I believe we have about 36 residents or residency of Pittsburgh who have purchased homes through our program. So, the Housing Authority continues to work with the community, partners, City Council, with anyone that have a bright idea as far as how do you create affordable housing? We work with them. And we feel pretty good about what we achieved this year. And going into 2026, I see about 10 development projects that would be closing or financial closing or being completed. We're also working on 834 units around about, based on a choice neighborhood award that the Housing Authority was awarded, I believe about two years ago. Well, we received $50 million. Received $50 million. And the process of creating those units is probably create lots of jobs. And we have lots of residents who are participating in that process. The residents who participate in that process, they're making from $25 to $36 an hour. And they also learn the skill which they can transfer to other construction sites in the future. When the Housing Authority received the Choice Neighborhood Grant from the federal government, it was a competition among other housing authorities in cities and nonprofit groups. It probably was about 40 or 50 who applied for it. But the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh received the $50,000 with four other housing authority. And that was because of community participation, working with the community, working with our partners like URA, working with the Board, working with foundations, what I like to call Team Pittsburgh, working with the City School District. And so, we were very successful in receiving Choice Neighborhood Grants. By the way, of all the housing authorities, the Housing Authority of Pittsburgh and the Housing Authority of Philly are the only ones who have received two Choice Neighborhood Grants. And for the City of Pittsburgh, that was $80 million, which probably generate probably about billion dollars worth of activities. And we also received two planning grants. There's so many things we can do with the staff of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh and with my partners who are behind me, URA, and the guidance of my Board, which you are a member of. And we always open to any discussions or any bright idea to improve the affordable housing in the City of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other staff going to make any other presentations? Or should we open up for questions?
I'm ready for questions.
Okay. I do want to announce that my esteemed colleague from District 3, Councilman Charlin, has joined us and I'll give you the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Charlin. Thank you all for being here. Apologize for being a little bit late here. You know, I want to say from my personal experience, you know, if I can be perfectly honest, taking office about two years ago, working with the Housing Authority was not something I was looking forward to doing. You know, we'd get calls in our office about Housing Authority properties and it was always kind of challenging to figure out. But I will say that over the last two years, my view on that has changed dramatically. And you guys really have been a delight to work with.
Thank you.
I want to thank, you know, you've got a lot of key staff, but specifically Tony Choffey and Michelle Ralston have been, and Michelle Sandage have been so great to work with. And I just really want to thank, you know, your team for being so active in the facilities in my district, inviting me in for anything, you know, from silly stuff to serious stuff and getting these tenant councils up and running. They have been a real, like, a real bright spot in the work that we do here. And I want to thank you for being such a phenomenal partner for our district here. You know, it really is, you know, a partnership there. I know that you're not, not every resident that you serve is an easy case, is, you know. But it has worked out really well to have a partner. You know, often when I'm hearing a concern from one of your residents that, you know, their blinds don't work or something, either you, Mr. Binion, or Michelle, or they're like, "All right, let's go up right now. Let's take a look." You know, that's the kind of service that I wish we all in the city would deliver. And I really do just appreciate your partnerships and being able to have that kind of on the spot. "We're going to take care of the problem. We're going to get things done. We're going to serve the people that need it right away," your mentality. And I just, again, cannot thank you guys enough for being such great partners in the district here. You know, I guess, I really don't have a whole lot of questions here because I talk to you guys all the time. But, you know, I guess, you know, from your perspective, and I know that there's, you're coming before City Council. We really cannot give you, you know, additional funding or anything. There's not, that's not... You're actually not able to accept it even. So, even if we wanted to, and Lord knows we don't have it. But, that being said, you know, I'm curious, is there any way that we can partner better with you? Is there any way that I can be a better advocate for the work that you're doing all throughout the district? Is there anything that I can champion to my colleagues here about the work that you've done already in my district and how you can have that same successes elsewhere throughout the city?
Yeah, you're doing an excellent job working with us so far. We have the community meetings which you attend. The residents in your district know you very well. They know me very well. And because of that relationship, like I said, we have great service and then we able to discuss some of those situations might be a little difficult. But having you as a partner is a plus to us to be able to work with City Council and to work with the residents and the community groups, you know, as one, to work on big problems. And then also to work and trying to find ways that we can take our resources, city resources, URA resources, foundation resources, and the bright idea and the great imagination of my staff to create affordable housing. There used to be a time, you know, for example, generally, housing, to build affordable housing costs about $550,000.
A unit, yeah.
But imagine if our staff, we are able to create housing between $80,000 to $120,000 with a 40-year affordability. And that's how we able to constantly, constantly have groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings and the leadership of my Board.
Fantastic. That's really all that I've got. I, you know, again, I want to thank you. I want to be able to continue working with you guys and excited for all the Christmas parties and stuff that we're going to have to go through here soon. So, you know, make sure, I'm sure you guys will, but, you know, make sure we're ready for that and got our dancing shoes on and... Whatever else that entails.
Did I see you dance the other day?
Yeah, yeah. Might have blinded your eyes, but it's not a pretty thing, but, you know. I'll do what I have to, so. All right. Well, thank you guys very much for being here.
Thank you, Councilman. I have a few questions. My first question is, you talked about the Choice Grants and, you know, and how rare they are. Can you talk about how many of those grants get awarded per year? And you were saying, if I'm not mistaken, Philadelphia and Pittsburgh are the only two cities that have ever gotten multiple Choice Grants?
Correct. I believe in the present budget for 2026, I think it's a reduction of money for Choice Neighborhood. But we, our next one that we will be applying for would be for the north side. And we already start, you know, playing with the community, playing with the residents as far as what they want to happen. And because the competitive process related to Choice Neighborhood and the budget for 2026, the Housing Authority have followed alternative to be able to create affordable housing on the north side by taking down part of Allagany County, Allagany Housing Development. And so, we do have a plan for that, working with the Bureau of Foundation, working with the community group and other foundations to improve affordable housing on the north side.
Okay. And is there anything you can, you know, speak to? And I know the Housing Authority has won numerous, you know, awards. I think at almost every board meeting, Michelle announces a national award. But can you speak with specificity to, like, what are the strengths that the authority has of why the authority has gotten to Choice Grants? Like, what did, at the federal government and HUD, what are they looking for that the Housing Authority has that has put you in a position to be so competitive against, you know, dozens and dozens of cities, larger and smaller around the country?
Why am I still our secret? But...
Yeah, without sharing trade secrets, you know. You can keep it high level.
What I would say is Team Pittsburgh is a super team. That's, you take all the people, what you call Team Pittsburgh, which is the school board, the leadership from our Board, URA, church groups, just the whole community working together to make things happen. But I do have very talented people on my staff who understand what the government wants for affordable housing. Some people would turn in application, it would look like this. We turn the application, it might look like this. And matter of fact, the Choice for the one on the hill, for the initial grant, I think we wrote that like in four or five days. So, I have a very talented staff. And such, we have problems because HUD sends every, almost every housing authority to us to try to learn our trade. So, we constantly, people constantly come to City of Pittsburgh for a field trip to talk to that URA team with great partners and my staff and other partners in the City of Pittsburgh to see how they can get an opportunity to get a Choice Neighborhood grant in their community and city. So, I think we have great leadership at the Housing Authority. And I guess, I'm going to use the word talent. I have talented people who works for me at the Housing Authority. And therefore, we are pathfinders. We are the ones that go out and try it, test it, figure it out. And then other people can emulate what we end up doing in our successes. And we feel very proud about that.
I have a few more questions, but I'm going to ask one and then I'm going to offer the floor to the Councilwoman Warwick, who has joined us as well. But my next question is, you know, what things that we should be doing as partners with the Housing Authority to, you know, be prepared and be as effective as we can, you know, in this environment where there has been proposed cuts, you know, and things like that? And I don't want to get you in a situation where you're critiquing HUD. You know, that's our job on our side. But just from an operational standpoint, do you have any challenges that you anticipate? You know, and how can we, you know, work together to address what I'll call a changing environment, you know, to keep you from, you know, I don't want to put you in any hot water?
Well, we find solutions. And, you know, that's regardless what the landscape look like. We can always find a solution. I think we have, we had a shortfall in Choice Neighborhood for Phase 2 because the administration decided that they were not going to support development, development block grant, community development block grant. I don't think there was any money. But we was able to find a way to continue what we was doing. I think we had a 9% tax credit that most of the time, we would have got it because the community development block grant from the present budget indicate there's no money for that. However, we figured out resources to be able to continue that process and work with our partners of the City and URA. I just say, we just have great relationships. And with our partners, we can always figure out how. And we work hard to find a solution because we feel there's always a solution to any problem. And that's why we work. So, that's, I think, the relationships. The money that we receive from HUD, we will continue to maximize with other resources that we have in the city to create affordable housing.
Thank you. And now, I'm going to give opportunity for our esteemed Councilwoman from District 5 to ask any questions or provide any comments.
Yeah, thank you. Apologies for being late. So, yeah, I do have a few questions. So, just so, from last year to this year, and apologies if this has already been mentioned. So, how many new landlords in the city have been signed on since last year? And how many, how many new units?
I'd say that we have, let me see, last year, I would say you had additional landlords. But looking at the budget for last year for Housing Choice Voucher Program, I believe it went up about $14 million. Somebody said it went up?
$14 million.
$14 million. That is half payment, that's payments to the landlord. So, what they indicate, because that payment went up, there was a significant increase in landlords' participation in the program and a significant amount of units that was occupied by residents. Let me see. These are, last year, we was under 5,000 on the Housing Choice Voucher Program. These numbers, which numbers you got? Wait a minute.
I don't have it.
I got cheese shit.
I don't think we have it actually in here. But we have the budgeted, we have the budgeted units, but...
Right now, we have 5,413 Housing Choice Vouchers are active right now while people are staying in affordable housing. Last year, we were under 5, we probably was 48,000 or 49,000 when I talked to you last, 48,000 or 49,000 when I talked to you last year.
So, when you say active, does that mean people holding the voucher?
People who are actually living in units, using their vouchers.
Okay. And those are tenant vouchers?
That's a mixture of tenant vouchers and project-based vouchers. That's the whole program.
That's the whole program. Okay. But do we know how many new tenant-based voucher landlords Housing Authority has brought on in the past year? I know there's one, but I know of one.
I believe somebody, hopefully my staff is watching this. And somebody will text me in a little while to tell me the increase. Now...
Either way, we'll get you the, we'll get you the...
Yeah. But I do have to say this. Did we lose landlords or were we able to retain landlords? Because I think that's where you were concerned last year. And I think what you're finding in final analysis, we were able to retain landlords and we was able to have the landlords to add more or buy more properties to put on the program. I mean, the impact of how much money we pay out because government is designing...
Okay, well, maybe not landlords' units, right? Okay.
Right, units, right. And so, it's increased. That's all I got to say. If we're looking at a chart, the line's going straight up.
Okay, well, it would be good to see those numbers just to understand how the landlord recruitment program is going. And also in neighborhoods, right? Like, sort of to see if we're increasing, if we're just sort of getting more landlords, just buying more properties in a neighborhood where we already have lots of voucher tenants, which is fine, but also landlords in other neighborhoods where we don't have as many voucher holders?
So, I would say, last year, we gave you a map depicting in all communities where the Housing Choice Voucher Program is being used and also the project base. We can overlay that map and be able to give you a new map for now as current. Because one of our programs, I think we increase participation in the areas that we normally would not be in. We are in every city community except one. Everyone, everywhere. However, I will get that map to you.
Okay. Thank you. And then sort of along those same lines, I'm curious about improvements that, you know, like specific improvements that have been made to just kind of the landlord customer service? Because, you know, we had the post agenda about it and...
Yes. Well, I don't think any landlord's been calling you recently. I think that you're not getting the calls. You know, we work very hard with the landlords. I think the last time, the problem that we had, I had to revamp my whole staff. And we was going through the process of rebuilding those relationships. So, now I have a new staff, lines of communications with landlords are better. We have landlord meetings. They, the only thing that's upset now because, a little upset on the rent increases because the market dropped. And so, you can see right now, the Housing Choice Voucher Program, some of our payments are above the market rate. And so, people would be unable to get a rent increase because the market went down. However, we also see the market going back up. And we will, and we would adjust to that.
I want, one thing I have heard recently and actually have not had the chance to get in touch with your office yet, but is some difficulties with filling project-based voucher units, right? So, specifically in Hazelwood where units are sitting empty and there's been some frustration.
Okay. Glad you brought that up. Well, normally what happens, we get new situations where the Housing Authority look like we're not accomplishing what some project-based developers think we should be doing. I just finished looking in the comprehensive way of what's going with Hazelwood. Sometimes the developer is not doing what they need to do. I mean, because it's a three-way process. It's the residents getting information to us. It's the landlord who processes the people. And then the Housing Authority, which compile all the information. So, even though they might say they have a slow time leasing up, but I can share some time with you to show you data to support exactly what's going on while going into detail here.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think maybe then there, that needs to be communicated.
You might be getting some misinformation.
All right, maybe we can talk about that more specifically. I will say, just from personal experience, it seems back to the tenant-based voucher, has a process been implemented to have one person managing both sides of both, like, one person who is in contact with the tenant and in contact with the landlord who can make sure that that is being communicated? Like, if, right? Because the tenant and landlord aren't, oh, most times are not communicating, right? They don't know each other necessarily. There was just someone applying for a unit, right? But they have to communicate through HACP. But prior, it seemed that there was like, the landlord had a person and the tenant had a person. And then it was like, "Well, I can't tell you what's with that because that's not my department, that's the tenant's person." And it's like, "Well, that really should be the same person," it seems to me.
Okay. What I would say is, we do have a person for the landlord. And we have a housing specialist and their leaders working with the tenants on their vouchers. Now, if there's a problem, generally what we do now, we can send a release form to the tenant for the landlord to be able to talk the information that is missing. And also, we do Zoom calls. We have Zoom set up. So, if you're a landlord and I have a tenant and the tenant is not giving us the information for us to be in compliance with federal regulations and we cannot finish completing the contract, so what we do is set up a Zoom call with the landlord, the tenant, because we cannot talk about their personal information. So, when you're on this Zoom call, normally, right after that call, any complications related with the contract get done immediately. Because if the landlord is missing something or the tenant, we're all there together to work through that solution.
But it seems to me that, so, let's just say the landlord gets, the inspection is done. And then they're just waiting to hear back. And then they write back and they're like, "What's the status?" It's like, "Oh, there's something with the tenant." And so, there's, it's just sort of like a lack of clarity. And it seems that if it were the same person, right? Then the landlord would be like, "What's going on?" And I get it that you can't divulge any personal information about the tenant. However, right, you could be like, "Okay, the inspection is done. Now I'm calling the tenant," being like, "This is what I need from you," right? Or, "Now I'm calling the landlord. This is what I need from you to get that person in that unit as quickly as possible once the inspection is done."
Okay, the Housing Authority, after initial inspection and you pass inspection, we have 60 days to get the contract done. And during that process, we try to get that done in less than 30 days. However, when you get to the 40th day, 40 days, and the contract is not done, a letter is generated to the landlord to tell them... a letter is generated to the landlord to tell them something is missing from your tenant. And then that stimulate the conversation.
Right, but what I'm saying is, you will not get new landlords with a thirty day process. That's not gonna happen, because a new landlord in this market can get a tenant in that apartment in two days, right? So, the point I'm making is that the, like, that seems like, is to have one person who is overseeing both tenant and landlord, right? For, for a given unit.
Yeah, that's, that's the director, I mean, I think that what happens in these situations, you might hear some small conversations that we have over fifty, fifty six of tenants and one or two conversations come up and you, people would think that's a represent the whole program. Uh, I would encourage you to come and visit, uh, with me to see how this process works.
But I have experienced this process personally.
This process, yeah, you might have, when I said our fifty six hundred residence incidents will happen, these are not day to day activities. And generally what happens, uh, most of the time, people have not complied to the federal regulations. And I did say last year that I had problems with my staff and I have replaced that staff. And we're not having those type of problems on a big large. We are processing about a hundred and twenty contracts per month. Last year, I probably was doing thirty or forty. I was in a bad situation, but we discussed it last year.
But I feel like the, the issue is, and I will say, once the tenant is in the unit, it is a well oiled machine from, for, you know, I mean, assuming that the tenant is paying and, and what, right? Like, and, you know, perhaps issues with utilities, right? Assuming that the tenant is doing what they're supposed to do from the Housing Authorities, but it, it, it goes smoothly, right? You get paid, as the landlord, you get paid every month, right? The issue is getting the tenant in the unit.
Yes.
It, and I, I recognize that you have sixty days and I recognize that after forty days, a letter go, but even thirty days is too long, right? Like, it's too long.
We can, we can process.
Wait thirty days.
People in ten days.
Well, okay.
Yeah, we are doing that, but what I'm saying is, um, we have benchmarks, but is, when you dealing with three key people? It could be the landlord, it could be the Housing Authority, but the reality is that what is the measurement of success? If I look at how, how we processing people and say, oh, we are successful, I would say yes. And then at the same time, everything, everything is not a hundred percent. There's always gonna be three percent of something. And I believe what you're talking about, the three percent or the one percent, it's not the standard and that's all I can say about that.
Okay, I guess we'll, we feel like we're talking past each other a little bit, but, um.
But, um, I, I'd like to set, set up some time with you.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, I, I will just sort of press on this, that, that seems like a pretty straightforward fix. Would, you know, if you have twenty people, if you have ten people doing tenants and ten people doing landlords, right? Train them all to do tenants and landlords and then distribute. And that way you have one person and you don't have someone at H A C P who's saying, oh, I don't know what's going on because it's with the tenant, the, the tenant, I forget the word for it. You see what I mean?
Uh, no, I don't, um, I think we have a process, you don't understand my process and I don't understand your process, but at the end of the day, look at the numbers and how, see how we processing people. Uh, like I said, there's gonna be three percent of activities that occur that we dislike. But what happens with the ninety seven percent?
Okay, well, in that case, I would like to then see the numbers of new landlords that have been added to the program. Not existing landlords who know the program, I get that, like, if you know it and you do it and it's like, you just kinda, that's, you know, you're, you're, you're used to the process, but new landlords, right? I, I would like to see that number and, and hopefully, and then yes, and now, you know, and I, I, I will, I will agree that if, that, that the process, my, my personal experience with the process is this struck me as a major, a, a fairly simple way to streamline, right? Would be to have one point of contact for both the landlord and the tenant. Even if they're not sharing personal information between the two, just being one point of contact rather than two.
I believe I structure support what you're saying, but like I said, we just need to talk, you talk to house specialists who have six hundred people on their caseload. But we can talk about it. So I agree that you agreed to me.
Yep, anyway, I think, uh, oh, no, I do have, so also just with oversight of managed properties. So, um, I know we have a new, um, management at, uh, at Glen Hazel. And I would like to hear a little bit about, because I, I am very concerned about, um, so throughout the pandemic and the previous management company, which was, I, I think everyone can agree and we've discussed before, was doing a subpar job managing that property. Everything from fixing the elevators to fixing the doors to, um, relaying information to tenants, et cetera. So we have a number of tenants whose books are, who are like in arrears in the tens of thousands of dollars.
Right.
Right, and, um, this new management company is now coming in and my concern is that they are moving forward with evictions of tenants. Rather than, A, going through those books and seeing if they are accurate, which, given the incompetency of the prior management company and all other things, is probably reasonable to say that they were also not keeping good track of the books, right? I think that's fair. And, um, so to see if that is the real number, right, that a tenant's got some like forty thou, like if that, if that is the real number, if, or, or if it weren't an issue of them not having re-upped their income or whatever, and now they're getting charged too much, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, for a long, long time. And then, um, my question is, if a tenant, you know, if the books have been looked at and a tenant is in fact twenty thousand dollars in the hole or something, money that, money that no one is ever gonna get back, would it not be, or it would certainly be preferable to me in order to keep folks in their home to just clean slate, right? Start over with a new management company who's provide, or, you know, providing the services and following up and making sure that people have done everything that they need to do. And then if they still aren't catching up, you know, if they, then, then, okay, maybe you can talk about moving forward with, with evictions. But I think that, uh, moving forward with evictions now, I, I have grave concerns about that.
Okay, so again, you only hear one side of the story. You might not realize that, uh, the Housing Authority with other government agencies, that we have cross matched information about how people receive the income. Uh, HUD verified as people working, some of the people that you are talking about have decided for the time that the government said, you don't need to pay rent. They continue not to pay rent while, while they was working. And then after this was lifted, they continued not to pay rent. However, the Housing Authority worked with other residents, we was able to collect three point five million dollars from, um, from Action Hou, excuse me, for Action Housing to assist people with those, with that situation. And we also worked with Action Housing to create almost a one page or two page application for people can apply to get their, get their money, uh, their rent paid. The people we're talking about, they probably did not do that. The people you talk about it, they decided that working and they supposed to pay rent, decide not to pay rent. They decide not to pay rent while they have an income. Now, if their income change or there's mitigating circumstances, yes, we will do the fair thing. But if you working, the government say, if you working, you pay rent, period. HUD is not gonna let me just write that off, I can't do it, we already asked. Bottom line, the people need to get a payment agreement, which we open to. Uh, I think most of the money that was available has been exhausted. And therefore, we have no other choice but to evict the people.
My understanding is that it is not the case, that, that H A C P has made, um, you know, it, in other, um, in other buildings has sat down and sort of wiped the slate clean where possible.
No, no, see, this is my CFO here, Asen.
Right, no, we, unfortunately the regulations state that we, you know, number one, we have to charge rent. Number two, if they're working, they have to pay, but we cannot write that off unless they actually physically move out and desert the unit or we evict them or the other, then we can write it off.
Or if we did something wrong.
Right.
If we did something wrong.
Well, so that's the, that's the issue, right? Is that there was a management company that was providing no services, was not in the office, not available. People were paying rent and there was no, there seemed to be no paper trail. I mean, and this isn't just one tenant saying it, this is numerous tenants saying it. Saying that the, the, they would get information about rent paid that was wildly off base and there was no support. Because it was left to the management company. And not, and so that is where I would say, you know, with the buck obviously stopping at H A C P. I mean, again, this is something that we will talk further about, but, um, but if the end result of a new management company coming in to Glen Hazel is that sixty people get evicted from their home, that is not a success story. That is not what, what we wanna see in, in.
I, I agree.
In our city.
We would continue to work with people, like I say, I do have constraints and I try to.
Right, but what's on the table now, my understanding, is that all these people are getting evicted.
I don't think I got to that point right now, I think we still working going through their paperwork, we are doing a deep dive of each person. But I'm, like I say, if someone is in a situation for the last four or five years they've been working, making over thirty thousand dollars a year and not paying rent, they will get evicted, period. Now, if we committed error and then we have opportunity to tell HUD, this is an error that House, the Housing Authority created error, or error or some situation, then, yeah, I will be able to write it off. But right now, we going through all those cases, one by one. And again, um, I'm not gonna say lack of information.
I just don't see how a tenant gets tens of thousands of dollars in arrears on their rent and nothing is done about it until now. That to me, in and of itself, is a failure of the system. Because someone should have reached out to that tenant, and you know how people are, right? They get scared, they're behind, they get, you know, they don't answer the phone. But getting in touch with that tenant, not in a punitive way, but in a way of saying, look, let's get you back to where, you know, let's figure out what's going on here. Not when you're forty thou, but when you, when you're one month behind, two month, but that, that, that's when this problem needs to get solved. So that in and of itself is a failure on the management company and H A C P who ultimately, you know, the management company is responsible for.
Relationship with the management company, we have hired a new management company, as you know.
Right, and so that's my point, is that the new management company.
At the Housing Authority has been unfair in their activities, like I said, we would take care of that, but.
But I think allowing a tenant to get tens of thousand dollars in debt.
I think you and I just need to meet, I, I don't think we should debate until you get all the facts.
I mean, we will, but this is, this, that's the whole point of these, of these hearings, right? Is to talk about what's working and what's not working. And tenants who are tens of thousand dollars in debt and now a new management company is coming in and they're looking at eviction because the previous management company allowed them to get tens of thousand dollars in debt is, is, is one of the things that's not working. And it's a, and it's a very serious issue in my community and that's what we're here to do.
And I know that we are communiting to those residents, that when the money for Action House was available for them to go and apply to receive the money, like, like, like I said, we collected may over three point five million dollars. The contact was made to those residents and suddenly refused to fill out the application. And so like I say, it's case by case and I, I, I just need to sit down and you need to see what I see and then we can have the discussion.
I just don't know.
Balance conversation right now.
When you say we, we reached, who, who reached out to those residents, the prior management company?
Prior management, uh.
Yeah, they didn't even pick up the garbage.
Staff, I asserted my staff to go down there and work and do that. Even when the poor management company was in there while I was going through transition, I said, my staff, you know who my staff are. And so, let's look at, let's look at the paper trail, that's what we have. That conversation, we have facts, let's look at them, see what, actually what they say. Not a conversation of somebody say that we doing them wrong while we could constantly been sending them information. But I think that we need to talk later.
I, I would like to add, this just so, you know, so happened to coincide with the pandemic and the moratorium where we are not allowed to take people for eviction. So I think that contributed to some of these balances getting higher than they normally would, regardless of whether or not the company was, you know, good at their job. But I think those kind of extenuating circumstances is, is what made a lot of those balances uh, much higher than they would have been ordinarily under just a strictly bad management company. But, so we would have been able to start that process sooner, which we were not under the eviction moratorium, we were not allowed to take people to court at that time.
We could not evict people. Some people had, well, we just was following instructions of the federal government at that time.
Okay, well, anyway, I, I don't think I have any further questions, thank you.
I'd also like to announce that we have been joined by Council President Lavelle and Councilwoman Gross. Uh, Council President Lavelle, uh, the floor is yours if you have any questions or comments.
None at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Council President and Councilwoman Gross, uh, the floor is now yours if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I apologize for being off camera, I'm not sure I'm gonna manage. Let me try one thing, see if I can get on camera, hold on one sec. There, can you see me and hear me now?
Yep, we can see and hear you.
Thank you, appreciate it, um, so I've been listening in, um, since, um, I missed the, the beginning of the presentation, but I was here for, um, Councilwoman Warwick's line of questioning. And I want to, um, affirm that I think her very first question was important to answer and, and, uh, you didn't have an answer today, so I would also like to see that answer. And the question was, how many new landlords have you, whatever it's called, in, you know, started in the system, I forget, on boarded, I'm not sure exactly your, what, um, your terminology is. Because I believe that we have seen landlords leave the tenant based voucher system. Because we've seen a lot of real estate turnover. Um, so in my own district, we had the largest scattered site portfolio transfer ownership in, in, in any history anyone can find or remember in Pittsburgh. So some three hundred dwellings, scattered site, all single family looking homes, but with apartments in them and some of the section eight, um, units were sold as a complete portfolio to an estate company. Um, and they're starting to either sell some of those buildings, with those homes, it's like, again, single family homes, protecting like Lawrenceville, Bloomfield, Polish Hill. Or, um, renovate, renovations types of things. So that's one example, but I believe across the city, we're seeing a lot of property ownership turnover. Some to LLCs, some just from corporation to corporation. And I believe that we're going to see an atrophy in the number of landlords that are participating in the system and we need to be proactive. and we need to be proactive in recruiting. I know there have been efforts over the years from neighborhood legal services, and having landlords kind of program that participated and coached people into participating. But I think the Housing Authority also needs to be proactive. So I know you didn't have the answer today, but I would like to see the answer of the numbers of individual landlords that are participating, not number of units, number of landlords.
Yes, we would be able to get that information to you. We did motivate last year a very aggressive program to increase landlords. We set up program, if landlords went out and spent five thousand dollars on a unit, we gave them enhanced payment standard. It was so popular, I had to start the program, I was running out of money because it was going so fast. And those landlords, some are new landlords, and some, it's a mix, but I will get that information to you. We, we constantly work programs to increase the relationship with landlords, and also to increase a number of landlords to participate in the program. So I might have that number shortly, if not, I will get that to you right away.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. And then secondly, we asked this question a number of years ago, and I believe that you were, it seemed like you were taken aback by the question, but you've heard it before, so I'm going to ask it again. The Housing Authority is, when I asked, I think, two or three years ago, when I was still Chair of Neighborhood Affairs and chairing this hearing, about your fair cloth limit and acquiring existing buildings. Since then, you acquired an existing apartment building in my district that was market rate, but was much, much lower rents than the new construction that we see anywhere else in the city. Right, so these were kind of older apartments in a rehabbed building, it's the building on Forty Sixth Street. Is there any updates about acquiring existing buildings to get us and spend down some of that cash and increase our number of units? If you presented it earlier, I apologize, but if you would mind repeating it, if you already presented it.
So we, we constantly buying units, I think I did a closing yesterday about four units. We bought some complexes, and, and I will get that information to you. Yeah, since we had that conversation, we aggressively went out to buy, we call turnkey units. As a matter of fact, we had to upgrade our standards, because when we bought units that we had to rehab on surface, you know, it probably looked okay with inspections, but once you got into those units and to take them to the HAC, HACP standard, it costs more. So, so when I turn key units, we are buying more units that are ready to move in. And I will get that number to you shortly, because I know we just bought some this week. And getting ready to buy maybe about two or three next week.
So if it's an existing building, is vocabulary alternative units? Is that how I heard you talk about it?
No, no, it's, I have ability to, at some situation, with some money I have, that we can, if we see a great opportunity to purchase existing units that is at great standards, we can go out and purchase those units. And that's what we, that's what we've been doing, and we continue to do that process.
Good, I would be interested in seeing those with the addresses, like itemized listed, so that I don't ask you to look at a property that is too costly, right? So if you know, I don't know, I'm just making something up, but I'm imagining, like, maybe you only want buildings that are from like the seventies or later, or maybe you don't want buildings in that period because the building standards were lower. God knows, I've seen buildings, multifamily, many, you know, pretty high-unit buildings, sell in my district and need, you know, entirely new sewer stacks even. Like many millions of dollars going into buildings that aren't a hundred years old. You know, they may be forty years old, because they just weren't built well when they were built initially. So it would be helpful to me to see which of the kinds of buildings that you're looking for and cost you less. Even though you say some of the existing buildings that you bought had more rehab than you expected, how much were they per unit to rehab?
They could, they could run fifty to sixty thousand. It could be in that range, but I had to get back to you, because some of the stuff, cosmetic stuff, we might want to just upgrade, we might just want to go in and, and take out the carpet and just put, you know, the wooden floor down. We might want to upgrade the AC, we might want to replace the roof. Those, because, you know, our business, that we want to create houses
That's not my question, I get it, it's always a root for a sewer. But I'm looking for a ballpark number, I'm not second guessing your decision-making. We're trying to figure out how to allocate funds. We use, as you counsel, a number for about five hundred thousand dollars per unit for new construction.
Correct, it's, it's five hundred, now it's about five hundred fifty thousand dollars for new units. And so the HUD give us allowance, or schedule, how much we can pay for a rehab house or existing house, and we use that.
What's the number for rehab houses that HUD gives you?
It, it depends on what type, I would send, it's called TDC, and we will send that schedule to you.
I'm assuming it's not five hundred thousand?
No, no, it could be up to, on scattered sites, it's, I believe, probably over five hundred thousand. So
Per unit?
Yeah, per unit. And so that's why, that's why
So they allocate you five hundred?
Go ahead.
Again, I'm talking about how we can communicate to the public that rehabbing units, you're not trying to tell the public that rehab units cost the same per unit as new construction?
I'm not saying that.
Okay, good.
I'm not saying that, what I'm saying is, is that we have a schedule from HUD, that when we buy existing units, they have a cap, how much the Housing Authority can spend. And when we try, we go below that cap, and then we try to look for good opportunities. And we take those opportunities, and we might have to do rehab. And what I'm saying is, I'm less moving away from rehab and move close to ones are more, now say, are turnkey ready. We use that term, if that's possible.
That would be cheaper for you. I'm not sure that it always meets the city's needs, it depends on where they are. Right, so of course we want to maximize the number of units, but not if they're all in the same neighborhood, or in an area that lacks transportation, lacks access to schools, lacks access to food and childcare. So there's a balance there, and I think this is why we ask these questions, because we want to make sure that what you think of as a board for the Housing Authority comports with what we are hearing from our constituents. So I'm still going to say roughly, even, you've said you've spent fifty to sixty thousand rehabbing per unit. Let's even say it's a hundred thousand per unit over your portfolio for rehab. That's still getting five times as many units by buying existing buildings and having new construction. I'm really grateful that we got the Choice Neighborhood Awards. I'm really grateful for the new construction in neighborhoods that were decimated and demolished decades ago that need to be rebuilt, again, because they are well-located, they're on transit, they're near schools. We're working on food access, but they're in central parts of the city that have, I think, a lot of public policy programming around them to rebuild. I'm thinking about District Nine as well. There have been significant resources that can be leveraged by also adding housing. So I'm not questioning those efforts, but I'm also saying, I want to, I think, there was a moment in the twenty teens where there was a lot of cash and fewer units. It's starting to catch up now, and I think buying the existing buildings and doing those rehab has been an important way to add more units under Housing Authority control. So I'll leave it at that. And I'll look forward to your numbers, and that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
For conversation purposes, we have bought houses on North Side.
I didn't ask a question, sorry. I know it's a little bit rude of me, but it's just one of my pet peeves that
Thank you.
The, the guests at the table are supposed to respond to questions. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman, I have just, just a few questions, then I'll open it back up if there's, if there's a second round. Are there, and, 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 you know, I mentioned earlier that, you know, at every monthly board meeting, you know, Michelle Sanded shares, you know, some accolade or award you, the authority gets on a national level. Are there other authorities that you look at, and, and, as, as, as an example, have particular programming that, that you would like to replicate, that, that you look at, you know, as, 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 as a North Star? I know you said that HUD often sends other authorities to come to Pittsburgh and, and learn from you, but are there some other authorities that have some programming that you would like to look at and, and replicate here in Pittsburgh?
Yeah, I think that anytime we run into situations that we want to improve our services, or anything, we would look at other housing authorities. You know, for example, one housing authority, I think it was Philly, they was using a kiosk in their lobby, and I think we just recently purchased a kiosk. We look at best practices and then to try to adopt those, even though some of our stuff are best practices. But we look at best, best practices in this field and then try to adopt those, if it's going to improve service and affordability.
So you, so you see Philadelphia, is there any other besides Philadelphia that are really gold standard authorities?
I see Seattle. Basically, ones who, because we are a special housing authority, it's called MTW, and we have flexibility. Majority of the housing authorities do not have that, I think it's thirty-seven housing authorities have flexibilities. And that's why we able to do a whole lot creative things. And once we approve that our decisions are successful, they can be adopted by other housing authorities. And so by having that flexibility, we can do different things. But we do look at best practices from our peers and adopting them if they necessary.
And being that you mentioned the Move to Work designation, you know, how did the, the city of Pittsburgh get that designation? And then if you could talk a little bit about, you know, the special abilities, so to speak, that Move to Work agencies have that the other authorities around the country don't?
Well, it was, I think it was competition, when was it, two thousand twelve? I wasn't here. Well, you can talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, it was actually even predates me as well. The Moving to Work program was started, I believe it went into action in two, the year two thousand. We were actually not one of the original thirty-eight chosen. You, you had to be a high performer, and I guess this is where it gets a little political. But I believe some of our politicians lobbied for us and got us in as the thirty-ninth and last member. Back, you know, this would have been the late nineties when they were making the decisions. So we got in then, and we've been a member ever since. The, the biggest thing for financially is probably the biggest, you know, flexibility that we have is the fungibility between the different pots of money. It's a bit of a jigsaw puzzle for us each year to, to make it all work, but it's a, it's a good problem to have. We are able to take our HCB funds, or our LPH funds, or our capital funds, and, and kind of use them in different ways that a normal housing authority wouldn't be able to cross that line with the different pots of money. So it helps us to, you know, number one, leverage a lot of money for, for development deals. But that's, that's the biggest part. I know we have other flexibilities as far as waivers and other different programs we run within the Housing Authority. Mr. Biddy can probably elaborate more on those, but that, the, the financial part is the biggest flexibility that we have.
I guess one I can mention is that HUD normally put a schedule out to say how much you can pay a landlord in, in a certain city. So what we was able to do with our flexibility, we was able to change our rules to adapt to local conditions. We can adapt to that market, not to HUD market, we can adapt to our market. And that makes the difference for our relationship with landlords and be able to pay landlords not based up on a national or, or a ten-year study, it can be based up on current. Because we able to change our payment standards based up on local conditions.
And just a couple kind of questions to follow up on some of the questions that, that have been asked. Can you talk about any specific efforts that the authority is engaged in to engage with prospective landlords who may be interested in, in, in participating in the voucher program, but, but may have reservations based on things that they may have heard that could be, you know, factual or fictitious, but, you know, creates a, a sense of reluctance to participate in the program? Are there any special efforts or things you do to recruit or, for lack of a better term, prospective landlords to, to engage in the program?
Well, like the last one I was talking about, we was able to pay landlords more, you know, based upon how much money they put into a unit, if it's over five thousand, I believe that did attract landlords. We have a landlord council that we meet with the landlords and to get input. If a landlord, anyone want to get on the program, I know that we have advertisement out there, and I remember seeing some billboards encouraging people to sign up for the program to talk about how to get direct payment and how it is set up. And so I do want to participate with, participate in the program, I mean, some that I have met one-on-one. So it's kind of like, until I get these numbers to you, I can depict, you know, what we accomplished in the last year as far as new landlords. Just looking at the numbers, embedded in, in the numbers, it, it probably depicts that we have increased landlords. Because, because we paying above market. I mean, financially, people are looking at the money. We paying above market in some situations, not in all markets. Like tiered, we have a tiered system that we created for the city of Pittsburgh that other housing authorities do not have, based on our funds, funds ability and our flexibility. So I guess that's the answer to that. We just, financially, we try to encourage landlords to participate, to participate in the program. Based upon how much we can pay out.
And, and, and again, this is somewhat of a follow-up to one of the questions that Councilwoman Warwick asked. Can you speak about the average time it takes for the authority to be notified of an available project-based voucher unit? And that, and, and when an applicant is, is approved for that unit? Can you speak to about the average time, and then also talk about, because I, I do remember a presentation that you provided for the board, maybe about, now, I think it was like a year ago, where you talked about how that, that time has been condensed significantly since kind of the toughest times during the pandemic, when you said that, that you were in, in a tough place, the authority was in a tough place, processing those. So can you speak about what is the average time now and how it has improved since, you know, the, the worst periods of, of the pandemic?
Okay, the first one that is measurable is how many contracts that we process per month. That, that was significant improvement. I would say that, and maybe it's time I was looking at, we was doing about thirty to forty contracts per month. Right now, we are doing a hundred plus, that's the impact. We, like I said, two years ago, as you know, we had a lot of complaints. And then I had to retrain the staff, hire new people, and to learn this complex work. It's take more than six months, but we had to accelerate that process. And so we, we are processing contracts in a timely manner. From the time a person start looking, I would say, by finding a unit, getting inspected, signing a contract, can run from ninety to a hundred and twenty days, because a person is looking for a unit. And but we like, we have units where people are turning inspection in, and he did all the stuff they're supposed to do. They comply to all the federal regulations, so we can issue payment. We have lots who that able to do that in ten, fifteen days. So, but when you take all these numbers and compile them together, we have reduced the time that we do inspections. I think at one time we could have been there forty days, we probably had twenty days now. And we reduced the time to process contracts. At one time was that, we had to remove the staff, I think I would say like a hundred and fifty days. And now down to probably sixty days. So we had to go to a transformation to retrain staff, because we were not getting the job done. So we had to go to a transformation to retrain staff because we were not getting the job done. And then we had to make some decisions. And so some organizations have to adapt to change. We adapted to change to provide better service and that's where we at now. Now, don't get me wrong, we continue need improvements. Just that's the nature of working with the public. That's the nature.
And is there a national standard for that time period? I think you said like ten or fifteen days is that? Do you have a sense of where that falls, like on a national scale of how quickly authorities turn around this process?
I want to get a look at it because when you talk about what I call critical mass housing authorities, large housing authorities in urban areas, they have the same complexity. And you can talk about small housing authorities, that's different, but if I look at the housing authorities that I've been at Kansas City, Nashville, St. Louis, you know, most of them the same, but I think everybody tried to get it done as soon as possible. But generally, the rub is not the processing. The rub is people getting information to us. If you get the information to us and have everything, we can process you fast. But we got back and forth, then that's a situation that we work at. We have data systems set up. I mean, if you say something to the housing authority, we are going to receive it, we are going to process, we can track anything. So if you ask me about resident right now, probably in ten seconds, I'll tell you everything that's going on with that resident, if there's a situation. So we work hard to improve customer service. And we will continue to work hard to reduce processing time and customer service.
My next question is an issue that's very important to me. You know, not only do, you know, I have, you know, a large concentration of housing authority properties in District Nine, but we also have a large concentration of privately owned, publicly subsidized, you know, housing. And we often, and it's generally not the housing authority properties, but we often get phone calls. We got a phone call, you know, yesterday where we had to send the Health Department out and the PLI out because that's kind of the leverage that we have, you know, as a city government to hold landlords, you know, accountable and sometimes have to put up a resident, like in a hotel. Does the housing authority regularly monitor PLI and Health Department violations? You know, so that, you know, particularly around the PVV landlords, you know, and track that so that there's kind of a shared knowledge base around the status, you know, beyond whatever initial inspection process. I forget, I should remember this because I know, you know, we talk about this in an executive session often. You know, how often, you know, your inspectors, but, you know, say that, you know, PLI or the Health Department comes out and there's a violation. Are you, are you made aware of that? Is there some sort of process? Is there a communication line?
Yes, I do have a database for, it was for public housing because we are the owner. You know, after landlord, Health Department go out to a housing choice voucher or Section Eight property, it's the owner. We will send inspector out there, we will, we will give, if it's not emergency, the landlord have like thirty days to abate that process or we just stop paying, and then we will give that resident a voucher. If it's the housing authority, we track those. If we need to correct some, we will send someone out there to correct it. And if it's a real, normally, you know, happen, if it's a situation that we had to remove the family and put them in hotels, we do that too. And so we do have a tracking system, we do monitor that and we work with them constantly. My person back there, Michelle Roth, she can talk more about it if you need additional information.
Sure. No, thank you. I have a couple of the questions, but I'll hold off because we talk all the time and and I'm sure I'll see you in the board meeting, but I do, you know, want to say that, you know, you know, much like Councilperson Charlin, you know, says, you know, I found the authority to be great partners. You know, when something comes up, you know, when a landlord calls me or when a tenant calls me, you and Amy respond immediately and get right to it, or even when it's development issues and developers are looking for gap funding and folks call. You know, you've been, you know, willing participant, you know, whether it's, you know, Bakery Square, you know, whether it's Homewood Gateway, you've been willing to come to the table. And I really thank you for coming to the table around Bakery Square because I think that's really the only way we got the developer to agree to the level of affordability that me and the mayor were negotiating. And I think it's a great example of how, you know, we can work together in this ecosystem, you know, to solve this crisis. Also, gotta give a shout out to Santi Turner and then even the non-traditional partnerships that we do with you agreeing to sign on to support the honorary street renaming for Pete Hill, being that the housing authority was one of the property owners on the street and it showed, and that was a real lift to the Homewood community a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, again, obviously, you know, we still have, you know, challenges and, you know, we all still get phone calls, you know, from constituents. And, you know, we know that, you know, none of us are batting a thousand. But, you know, I look forward to continuing to work with you and your staff. Because I do feel like the housing authority is an important piece, you know, of this puzzle of addressing the housing crisis in this, in the city of Pittsburgh. And we're not, you know, going to be able to solve this crisis, you know, without the housing authority playing a central role in that process. So any way that we can continue to work together, whether it's District Nine or whether it's citywide or even regionally, pulling in our partners like the URA, pulling in our partners like the Allegheny County Housing Authority as well and really getting beyond any territorial lines and seeing the big picture, I think is incredibly, incredibly important. So thank you for coming today. I want to open up the floor one more time if there's anyone who has any other questions or comments online or in person.
How you doing, Director? Quick follow up question to the conversation you and Councilman Gross were having. Because I don't think I fully appreciated the extent of which you were willing to renovate homes for the purpose of affordable housing. I don't believe we had, but correct me if I'm wrong, has the housing authority had any real conversation with the Pittsburgh Land Bank?
We, probably about a year ago. But I could have, as you know, I talk to everybody, so we needed to have that conversation. And I did, I think there was a time when the land bank was not moving.
That's true.
Right. And so, but they might have graduated to that point now where we can have that relationship. I think we are talking now about St. Clair. I think that lines of communication has stopped reopening again. So I can meet with, yeah, we can, we can do that.
Okay. I'll take you up on that offer. We'll follow up. I just think it'd be extremely worthwhile, not conversation, but exercise to go through where we looked at all the property that's coming into our inventory to sort of see what properties you may have interest in. So like, just as one example, in the Upper Hill right now, we're moving to acquire a property that we know we have to stabilize the roof, rebuild the porch, and then there's some other moderate stuff, but then we'd actually be looking to probably put it on the private market for homeownership opportunity. But that could also be, because there's a row, there's a string of row homes where that could potentially be a good partnership with the housing authority. If you all said, given your budget, if we'd stabilize it for fifty, sixty thousand or whatever the HUD approved number is, we could renovate and bring these properties back online. I just think it'd be worthwhile.
I think that would be a great conversation because there's some things I can do in the government, which I cannot do with private people. If that's in the government relationships, we can talk through that process.
It would be because we currently move property for the URA or PHDC as well, so we can do the same with the housing authority.
And working with a government entity, we have flexibility to do certain things without resources.
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Warwick?
I wanted to ask, so has the housing authority ever engaged a third party, sort of like process optimization firm?
Yeah, I think, which program?
On, on just, I mean, any, so, I mean, so these firms come in and they look at, you know, how do you do? So, you know, I mean, I'm thinking through the conversation, I mean, a question came, as I was listening, came up about wait lists, right? Like, I think, I don't know if it was last year, one of these table meetings, we talked about the waitlist process for project-based vouchers, where you have like multiple wait lists for multiple things and you got to send out a letter and then wait and hear back and that's, that's just not efficient, right? So you're sitting waiting to hear back. So what has, have you ever engaged a third party to come in and talk with staff and understand the process and make recommendations on how to streamline internal processes like these?
As you're talking about the wait lists, I don't believe we had anyone ever come in to talk to us about the wait list. It's pretty straightforward how the process works. They're fair housing concerns. Generally, you got a list, people are in order, you have to make sure you're in compliance with that. We use, we use a unique process. You know, for example, if, if I send out a hundred letters for people to, to get housing and then you have, you have, let's just say seventy five people show up. And then, once they fill out their paperwork, if I select them from the list, whoever in that pool of seventy five people who get all their paperwork done, they are housed. They do not have to wait. Generally, what housing authorities would do, they would go to one, process one, and then they go to two, they go to three, they go to four. But by us, which I call putting them in a pool, once your name is selected and you get all the information to us in a timely manner, we can house you. So I don't know exactly what you're asking me. It's not a complex system that need a third party, but we can talk about it.
I think that might be something maybe for the board to consider, just around, you know, is, I mean, that's something that we've done at the city, right, around like DPW processes, we've had, you know, and improvements. You identify, I mean, you talk to workers, right? You talk to workers, ask them what they do, obviously look at regulations and requirements and then, and then sit down and figure out ways that maybe wouldn't have been identified when you're like in it, when you're in, in the system, working in the system.
When you, inside a system, there'd be, which I call grandma rules, same thing you constantly do and do not create outside that box. And you might need an outside party to look at and say, have you thought about A, B, C, D? Yeah, I agree with you on that.
I think that that would be, that at least from, from, from what, that in two areas in particular, you know, getting tenants signed up and faster with new landlords for tenant-based vouchers and then also the waitlist situation. And I, and my understanding is that you, wait, you are, you are not able to just let a property owner do their own waitlist?
The regulations just changed recently. My staff told me, I think we have some new developments there are coming online with the landlords. The owners will be able to run their waitlist. I'm very paranoid about that situation because they violated, we ended up with fair housing, we could end up with consent decree, all kind of stuff. In this business, strict rules have to be followed. And we are going to allow those landlords to run their waiting list, but we will be monitoring them. And then if we determine that they are not in compliance with fair housing rules or they abuse the process, and then we will take that waitlist back.
Got it. Okay. At any rate, that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank the housing authority for their time and Director Binian, I'll definitely be in touch with any follow up. And I'm sure I'll see you at a, at a board meeting coming up and I'm sure I'll probably reach out to you prior to that as well. But thank you for coming today. I'd like to now ask the staff of the Urban Redevelopment Authority to join us.
Okay, thank you and thank you for the conversation. We going to take all the comments very, in a serious way and we will meet with other people in the future to discuss some of their concerns. And we will continue to work hard to be good partners.
Thank you. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy your time off. And we are now being joined by the staff of the Urban Redevelopment Authority. And while they're joining us, I will ask our Budget Director Peter McDevitt to give us a brief overview of the department.
Thank you, Councilman. The Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh is the city's of Pittsburgh's economic development enterprise, committed to building a prosperous and equitable economy for all of Pittsburgh. The URA is committed to helping to bridge public and private interests to invest in meaningful equitable developments that promote housing affordability, economic mobility, entrepreneurship and neighborhood revitalization. The URA's work creates and sustains quality jobs, thriving neighborhoods, healthy communities and sustainable businesses for the benefit of all Pittsburghers. The URA includes four high-level function units. They are central operations, development services, lending and investments and business solutions. And Council President Lavelle is the representative for Council on the URA Board. The URA does show up in the operating budget in a few places. The city receives some funding for the, an intergovernmental revenue for the four one two debt service. And the city transfers two point five million for the housing issuance bond. And in OMB operating, there is a twenty thousand dollar line item for administrative fees for the RACP awards that they manage on the city's behalf. Additionally, there's a number of capital budget line items that are specifically for the URA that is listed there. And lastly, the Housing Opportunity Fund. In two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, the city of Pittsburgh assembled the Affordable Housing Task Force to better understand the affordability, housing needs across the city. The task force recommended the city establish a housing trust fund. And in response, the city need, as a response to the need for affordable housing, the Housing Opportunity Fund was created. The HOFs is overseen by an advisory board and a governing board. The advisory board is composed of seventeen Pittsburgh residents, including Councilwoman Gross. There is ten million annually budgeted for the Housing Opportunity Fund in the city's budget. And just this week, the URA submitted their draft plan for two thousand and twenty six. So it's listed here, but you'll also discuss it next week at the standing committee meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Director. I would like to state for the record that we are joined by Councilwoman Warwick, Councilman Charlin, Council President Lavelle and Councilwoman Gross online. And now I'd like to ask the representatives from the Urban Redevelopment Authority to introduce yourselves, provide your title and feel free to begin your presentation.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning. Yes, still morning. My name is Sufiyan Ymani Stanger. I'm the Executive Director of the URA. I'll go down the line at the table.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Murray. I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Strategic Initiatives.
Good morning. I'm Demara Carter. I'm the CFO at the URA.
Good morning. I'm Tom Link. I'm the URA's Chief Development Officer.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a presentation for you. We also have a few colleagues on Zoom and they'll introduce themselves before their parts of the presentation. So I started my timer because I really want to be under thirty minutes, so I set it for twenty five. All right. On behalf, yeah. On behalf of the URA staff and Board of Directors, we appreciate the opportunity to present our two thousand and twenty six capital budget request. I'm joined today by four colleagues in person and a number on Zoom. So before we get into some specifics, I want to frame our work through the lens of our mission and our vision. So our, our mission is to foster sustainable prosperity for all of Pittsburghers. And our two thousand and twenty six request reflects that mission. We've taken a balanced approach to economic development because budgets are not just line items, they're a reflection of our values. Each dollar we requested is designed to leverage significant private and public Each dollar we requested is designed to leverage significant private and public investment, strengthen neighborhoods, expand housing opportunities, and ensure the URA has the operational capacity to deliver effectively. We appreciate the mayor's 2026 budget, because it does continue to support housing investments in critical communities like Bedford Choice, and expanded affordable housing opportunities, a modest but essential portion of our operational funding, and some support for small businesses. At the same time, several components of our balanced strategy are not reflected in the proposed budget. Today, we hope to provide a full picture of both what is funded and what is not, so it's clear how these gaps influence our ability to meet the needs of Pittsburgh neighborhoods. Before we turn to our impact, I'd like to acknowledge the partnerships and the affiliates that we utilize on a daily basis. As many of you know, the URA has five affiliates and programs within our agency, and they play a critical role in expanding our investment and community development capacity. Our affiliates allow us to leverage additional resources and expertise to strengthen neighborhoods and support long-term sustainable outcomes. Next slide. So, we have a number of talented staff, you know that, you know us, they're highly trained, and I do think a lot about a quote that Mulu Baru said decades ago, that I read about, he was being interviewed by PHLF, and he basically said, you know, "A, a world-renowned redevelopment authority doesn't just happen, it takes investment, it takes highly-trained staff, and that's what we have." And we engage with a number of cities and countries, actually, and you'll see the list here, where we learn about different economic development strategies, techniques, and we also share a lot of what we learned over the years. And so, by applying these partnerships and insights, we make for smarter, more effective investments, and deliver meaningful results in our community. Next slide. Okay. With that context, I will turn it over to my colleague Kiana Mosler, our Chief Housing Officer, and our other colleagues, who will walk through the URA's impact and the outcomes that these investments help drive throughout the city.
Thank you, Cecile. Affordable housing development is critical to Pittsburgh, because it stimulates the local economy, addresses the city's housing shortage, prevents the displacement of long-term residents, and helps ensure that families of all income levels can thrive and live in the city. It also can revitalize communities through job creation and increased tax revenue. At the URA, we're committed to making a profound impact on the housing landscape of Pittsburgh. Our residential and consumer lending department focuses on delivering affordable housing development and service solutions that benefit current homeowners, future homeowners, tenants, and all residents of the city. We provide gap financing for large and small construction and rehab opportunities, and we ensure affordability and stimulate the economy with that work. In 2024, as you can see on the slide, our dedication resulted in investments exceeding $32 million, leading to the creation and preservation of 733 rental and for sale housing units. We've also empowered 126 residents to become homeowners in partnership with the Housing Authority, and we've supported ninety-five low-income homeowners with vital repairs, extending their home's livability to allow them to remain in their home and not to become homeless or burdened with overwhelming repairs. In 2025, we have already surpassed the total, total units available for sale from 2024. The impact we have created highlights the effective collaboration of public-private partnerships, as well as city and county leadership, as well as the Housing Authority partnership, that are collectively meeting the needs of our community and driving meaningful change. Next slide. Additional programs such as Housing Stabilization Program, the Legal Assistance Program, are addressing housing crises, while our Home Accessibility Program allows cities' seniors to age in place. These programs support crisis prevention by providing services and home repair, and it highlights the ongoing need for affordable housing support and the Pittsburgh ecosystem. In 2024, we used funding from the city to support 1,418 families with legal assistance due to evictions, 313 families with rental assistance to help support evictions, and 23 senior or disabled households with critical accessibility repairs. Next slide. Our partnerships, again, are key to the work that we do, and we are grateful for the partnership with the City of Pittsburgh in helping to support the issuance of the first, of Pittsburgh's first Affordable Housing Bond in December of 2023. With that issuance, we raised $30.6 million in funding for affordable housing in Pittsburgh. The main goals of this Affordable Housing Bond issuance are to create 1,000 units, to fund projects at 80% AMI and below, and to spend down the funds within three years of the initial issuance. I'm happy to announce that to date, we have closed on approximately $10 million of bond financing. We've committed roughly $20 million in funds, and there's only $600,000 in funding remaining to be committed, with projects in the pipeline and are underwriting process, hoping to access these funds. We are also pleased to announce that we are on track to create or preserve at least 1,142 units through the utilization of the Affordable Housing Bond. These funds will help provide long-lasting impact to Pittsburgh's landscape by ensuring that units will remain affordable for thirty years, thirty-plus years, providing permanent housing for homeless families living on the street or in shelter. Lastly, the Affordable Housing Bond funds provided an opportunity to spur economic development in downtown through converting vacant and fallow office buildings into residential buildings. The next slide shows some of the projects in the pipeline that have applied for URA programs. These represent both large low-income housing tax credit deals, as well as smaller developments across the city. As a reminder, the URA never provides 100% of housing funding in the projects that we fund. Instead, our funding is a small but key piece of a larger financing package. These projects, as you can see, they, they also often include critical funding, as well as project-based vouchers from the Housing Authority City of Pittsburgh to make them work. With that, I'll turn it over to Tom Link to discuss our commercial, and, commercial lending and development impact.
Thank you so much, Kiana. Thank you to members of City Council, thank you to the public, folks listening and watching here. We appreciate your engagement and partnership. Yeah, again, my name is Tom Link, I'm the Chief Development Officer here at the URA. I'm going to present a few slides on our sort of return on investment, the economic impact that an investment at the URA returns to the public, as well as a few, couple of slides on our small business investment. You can go to, oh, you have this slide up, thank you. So, here we're sharing examples of a mission return on investment to the public with an investment in the URA. The URA has a unique ability to leverage significant private investment into the projects that we work on, typically upwards of five times, ten times, on individual projects that provide a real return to the public, in the form of jobs, new taxes, public space, public realm improvements, and certainly new housing units, as my colleague Kiana just enumerated. The slide you're looking at here enumerates some specific data points that we tried to capture that are specific to the last three years, so it's not in the, in the full of the URA, as to this return. So through our land, land disposition developments, projects that we have worked on, those projects project to create around 2,000, 2,000 new jobs. Our small business investment programs project to create around, about 1,200 new jobs. During this time, the URA has stewarded 700 acres of public realm improvements, returned 182 individual parcels to the tax rolls. These 182 tax parcels that have been returned to the tax parcels through our analysis, these specific parcels generate about $1.7 million annually to the three taxing bodies, now that they're back on the tax rolls. And I wanted to note here also as a data point, you know, the URA is the steward and the portfolio administrator of our tax diversion program, so tools like transit revitalization, investment districts, and tax increment financing portfolio, our active portfolio, the assessed value of those properties is in the neighborhood of $550 million, which is a, more than a ten-fold increase over the value of those parcels prior to those tax diversion projects taking place. I won't get into the numbers if you include our retired tax diversion portfolio, but it's, it's multi-fold if you include those. This, this work happens across the city, you know, the example shown here on the slide is the Troy Hill Fire Station, the former, I should say, Troy Hill Fire Station, that project we recently completed, working with a small business to return this formerly underutilized and non-tax-paying real estate to the tax rolls, creating new jobs and creating vibrancy to the Troy Hill community. You can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. This slide is, provides a variety of data points on our small business lending work. I think everyone here at the table knows, for the folks watching, you know, the URA is a robust small business lender. You know, if you're, frankly, if you're watching now, you have a small business, you're thinking about starting your business, expanding your business, I would encourage you to reach out to us. We help a number of businesses through this work. In 2024 alone, the URA invested nearly about $8 million in Pittsburgh small businesses. That leveraged directly about $20 million to those specific businesses. Nearly 200 businesses were supported through direct investment and technical assistance, and I, you know, we're proud of that. Eighty-one percent of the businesses that we've supported, this carries through our portfolio, are minority and/or women-owned business enterprises. Excuse me. You can go to the next slide, please, thank you. And here's a map that sort of illustrates this in a sort of visual way, but we, this work happens across our city, supporting small businesses. One thing I would say is, you know, when we support an individual business, you know, the way I, I'm sort of a visual person, but I start to think about almost the waterfall effect of that, so in an individual business, we not only leverage additional financial resources to that specific business, but the business hires people. Many of the folks that are hired are folks in our city, who have the opportunity to, to work. These businesses fill storefronts across our business districts, and there's a, and the, the effectiveness across our economy is, is robust, and this work happens across our city. With that, I will turn it over to my colleague Catherine to take it from here, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. Moving into our capital budget request, I want to take a moment to share our overall request, and also what is included in Mayor Gani's budget. As you can see, we submitted a robust request that fully reflects a balanced approach to economic development, including property maintenance and stabilization, investment in neighborhood equitable development projects, business counseling and affordable capital for entrepreneurs, and a continuation of our vital work in affordable housing. We also envision the revitalization of our commercial facade work, both in business districts across the city and downtown. This slide demonstrates what we received in the budget and the work that was not funded. As you can see, while we're grateful for the mayor's support of our affordable housing initiatives and modest program delivery dollars, significant areas of our work did not receive funding. We're grateful for council's ongoing support and interest in our work, and wanted to take a moment to share our full request and what we can effectively deploy in one year. I'll now turn it back to Kiana to detail our affordable housing allocations.
Thank you, Catherine. The Rental Gap Program is the program that is most commonly sought after by developers looking to create affordable rental units in the city. This program provides patient loans of up to $2 million per project to developments that include units at affordability levels of 60% AMI and below. The current budget includes $1.9 million in home funds towards this effort. With this funding, we can fund approximately one rental development, which will create approximately thirty affordable units. The City of Pittsburgh was recently awarded six Low Income Housing Tax Credit Awards for proposed housing developments in Pittsburgh, including the Carrick Senior Apartments development. These home funds will not only create affordable units, they will also bring underutilized and blighted properties back onto the tax rolls, like the property for Carrick Senior, and help create local jobs through the large-scale construction contracts that will be provided through that work. Next slide. Next, we have a request for $1 million in CDBG funding to support homeownership opportunities. These funds can be used in two different ways. They can be used as grants and loans to nonprofit developers for the rehabilitation or construction of new housing units intended for sale. At completion, those, those homes will be available to buyers whose income are at or below 80% of the area median income. The second opportunity for this funding, it can also be used to assist home buyers with mortgage support to make their home purchase affordable. We estimate that this funding, if used this way, will help create approximately ten affordable for sale, sorry, ten affordable for sale units, or support fifteen families with home purchases through mortgage support. Next slide. The Housing Opportunity Fund, or HOFF, is the City of Pittsburgh's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and plays a pivotal role in Pittsburgh's affordable housing landscape. Each year, the HOFF Advisory Board drafts an allocation plan and presents it to the City Council for approval as required. The 2026 draft plan includes some changes from the prior year, such as an increase in funding for the Rental Gap Program due to limited funding availability for that program from other sources. The 2025 allocation, sorry, the 2026 allocation plan legislation has been introduced to council, as mentioned earlier, as its final step for approval, and we will, we look forward to discussing this in detail with the council members in standing committee next week. As a quick summary of the URA's affordable housing efforts, we're able to do this affordable housing work thanks to critical investments from the city, and we appreciate the city's support year after year. The funds provided to the URA help the city meet many goals, including addressing the housing shortage, promoting equity and stability in our city neighborhoods, and by preventing displacement and supporting, and supporting community, community diversity. These funds also help stimulate economic growth through job creation, increased tax revenue, and by improving the quality of life of Pittsburgh residents, which contributes to a stronger overall community. So thank you for, for that and your many years of support. With that, I will turn it over to Brandon Wilson, so he can discuss Choice Neighborhoods.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brandon Wilson, and I am a senior project manager here at the URA. I'm here to discuss the URA's Bedford Choice projects. This year, we are asking for continued support in the form of 50 million, or, continued support of the $50 million Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant awarded to the City of Pittsburgh by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in 2023. The URA has partnered with the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, TREC Development, and Allegheny County Department of Human Services, in addition to the city, to implement this plan. The plan is broken into three components: housing, neighborhoods, people. I'll be addressing the housing component today. The housing plan will create 823 new rental units in the Hill District over six phases. This year, we are requesting $5 million in CDBG leverage for Bedford Phase Four on the 28-acre site. The preliminary plans for the development include 100 new rental units, with at least 50 of those units affordable at or below 80% AMI. We are grateful for the city's continued commitment to affordable housing through the Choice Neighborhoods grant. With that, I will pass this on to Tom Link to discuss small business work.
Thanks so much, Brandon. Yeah, just briefly here, this is, gets back to the budget request, so, in the budget request, we had requested $1 million in, you know, to support our small business programs, which I just described. In the current budget, there's $100,000 in support for small businesses. We think just, you know, on average, that helps one, maybe, to individual small businesses with, with a low-cost capital loan. I would say, you know, we're seeing, you know, demand on our tools, because we are, we're able to offer dollars at some basic level at a lower cost than one can generally find in the, in the private market, and so we're, you know, certainly increased demand on those dollars. Again, kind of, as to what I pointed out before, I would say an investment is not just the $100,000, say, or, it's sort of the opportunity cost of not investing in a small business, which feeds into, you know, you know, private investment that they would have been able to receive through our investment, the job creation, filling storefronts, and these, these types of things. So, you know, our investment leads to these things, a lack of investment doesn't lead to these things, and, and that's sort of the reflection here. But anyway, that's the request that was in the budget, $1 million, and there's $100,000 in the budget for these small business programs. Thank you very much. I think with that, I turn it over to my colleague, Damarra Carter. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Once again, I'm Damarra Carter, the CFO at the URA. The URA requested 1.54 million from the, from a combination of CDBG and PEGO funds for our administrative expenses. The mayor's budget allocated $750,000 for this line item. Personnel dollars are critical to the URA and our economic development initiative across the city to promote affordable housing, small business, entrepreneurship opportunities, and development activities. Personnel dollars enable our URA staff to deliver projects and programs and meet with communities in the neighborhood and network. We currently have 76. communities in the neighborhood and network. We currently have 76 employees working on these various projects and programs that are funded with the capital budget allocation. I want to show you two slides to help you understand how the annual allocation for the personnel compares to what we have paid staff to complete this work. The first slide shows a chart with two sets of information. The top set shows staff hours spent on various city funding sources, such as CDBG, Home, Pago, and HOFF, converted to dollars. The bottom set shows the personnel fundings we were awarded over the last three years. The next slide shows the same information, just in dollar amounts. While the URA does have funding, it is restricted funding, and we cannot utilize these funds for personnel outside of what is allocated within the grants. Thank you. And now I'll return it over to Shashila.
Thanks, Damarra. All right, three minutes left. Okay, so as outlined earlier, we deeply value your partnership, and we hope that we've proven that we are a reliable partner in helping to strengthen and stabilize the city. We really do feel strongly that our balanced approach to economic development is, is critically important to help strengthen the city. The slides that we presented shows the contrast between URA's full request and the allocations in the proposed budget. Several, this, this slide is really important. Several critical programs are completely unfunded this year. Residential and commercial facade investments, which remain one of the most visible ways to stabilize neighborhoods and attract private investment. Childcare business investments, which are essential for workforce stability and small business growth. Downtown investment support, which includes continued work tied to the downtown investment strategy. Property stabilization, where the URA prepares publicly owned structures for productive reuse. Neighborhood scale placemaking and development, which empowers residents to shape the future of places where they live and work while also attracting private investment. And finally, our small business support request was significantly, significantly reduced from 1 million to 100,000, as Tom noted. It drastically limits our ability to meet the high demand across commercial corridors, especially in underserved neighborhoods. These tools are critical investments that stabilize corridors and grows the city's tax base. As you all know, the URA executes, executes our work across Pittsburgh, from supporting small businesses to major efforts like downtown investment strategies. Yet many of these tools remain unfunded, including cuts to business and commercial funding and CDBG administrative support. So we recognize that this is a challenging budget year. We've been watching your deliberations. We've been taking notes. But at the same time, we need to be clear where additional investments would make the greatest impact. So our primary budget priorities in 2026 are preserving our current allocation, requesting additional small business and commercial corridor investments, and securing funding for neighborhood scale placemaking and development, both of which bring activity and vitality to business districts. These tools that we've utilized in the past consistently deliver high return on investment and address some of the most immediate needs in neighborhoods across the city. Next slide, please. Okay. Stop. Okay. All right. So just want to thank you so much for your time and attention. We are, we are completed before 30 minutes. So we know you have questions. So thank you again.
Yeah, I know Councilperson Charlin is on a tight timeline. And I believe you wrapped here first as well, so.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
After you. No, thank you. I appreciate that. And appreciate the presentation. And, you know, often in these conversations, we have, you know, there's budget questions, but there's also a little bit of year in review. I just want to thank you for being such a good partner to me over the, the course of last year and previous year, and being able to both brainstorm some things, as well as, you know, your, your ability to, to help us understand what, what we can do better in our district here. I, I do want to also acknowledge that you use picture, a phenomenal picture of Councilman Wilson, and then a picture of me at the Grand View South picture. I don't, I don't like that. So.
We could Photoshop that.
Yeah, if we could work on that.
All right, yes. Noted.
Yeah. No, but that is a phenomenal project, and, and I'm just happy to cut the ribbon on that. But, but the reality is that work had gone on, on to that for years. That was a big priority of, of Councilman Kraus. And it was, it was nice that I was able to be there for that. But, but what a, what a cool scattered site project that was there. I do, one of the, the things that comes up often when we talk about, you know, we, we are in this very challenging year, where our options are, you know, going to be layoffs or raising taxes or cutting services. One of the things that often comes up with that is what, you know, why is it that we keep giving money to the URA when the URA hasn't spent all the money they have? And I feel that I defend that often. But I would like to give you an opportunity to talk about what the difference between your committed funds are, and, you know, that you don't have all these uncommitted funds, funds floating around, that often people think you do.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that question. That's a, that's a question that we spend a lot of time on, because the time horizon for development is long. And as you noted, Councilwoman Kraus worked, started working on a project, and then you got to cut the ribbon. So that's wonderful. But when we commit our funding to a particular project or a particular developer, oftentimes a minority developer who has less access to capital, we know that to be true, we stay with them. We think it's important to, to evaluate our project, evaluate its impact. When we do commit to a project, you know, oftentimes we want to be last money in. Everyone wants to be last money in. It's just, it's just not possible for a capital stack. So we commit to a project, and the developer then continues to build their capital stack, go through the permitting process, finalize its design, and by the time it breaks ground, we're still with them. And so when we say, and Kiana touched on it quite a bit, is when, when we have funding committed, that, that means we're in it. We're in the deal, and we're working with that developer or community group to ensure that our funding stays with that project until it closes. And so there is a lag time between our commitment and when the money is out the door and deployed.
Yeah, I think it's something I hear kind of constantly when, you know, talking to, this is, this is the time when holiday parties start to really happen, and we're like, oh, we're really stressed about the budget. And people are like, why don't, you know, URA has all that money they're just sitting on. And, and I, I just want to get that message out as much as we can, that the URA is not sitting on money. The money is committed. It is, is in a project.
That's correct. Right. Yeah. And we've had this conversation with the city comptroller's office as well. We've provided definitions to what committed, encumbered, and deployed means. And so we hope that, you know, if there are any additional questions about that, we're happy to be, we're available to, to walk you through any project that we're committed to and provide you an overview of that project's status.
I, I appreciate that. And, you know, I think that's just something we need to, it's like, we've got to change the, change the mindset on that a little bit. The, you, again, in the context of we are going to have a very challenging budget year here, something that I really want to work on is trying to find a way to get you this, this small business support, and, and your, your corridor support, your facade grant support. These are all really important programs in my district. I think, you know, I, I don't think I'm alone in saying that my district is kind of made up of, of Main Streets. I think that's probably true for most other council members as well. But not, you know, not having that Main Street support is, is really challenging for us. That facade program was wildly popular. I mean, to the, to the point that we were trying to figure out how we can recreate ourselves kind of internally for the Main Street Matters program out of the state. Mount Oliver did that pretty successfully. We ultimately decided we don't really have a good vessel to do that this year, but hopefully next year, we, we will be looking at something like that. But that, I, I really want to, I really want us to get those programs kind of, kind of up and running and funded, because I, I desperately need it. I think my, my whole district is basically within walking distance of a, of a Main Street, and that is kind of our vitality and our, our vibrancy here in, in South Pittsburgh. So I do want to make sure that's something that is a, is a top priority, even in a year that we are going to be cutting a lot of other things and, and, you know, laying folks off. I, I do want to make sure that that's something we can, we can look for. The other, other thing that gets brought up a lot is the Housing Opportunity Fund. And again, I think this is something that, that gets mentioned a lot as a potential source of, of relief for next year. I can also tell you in my district how vital these programs are. And really looking through the numbers, I mean, the housing, HAP, what does HAP stand for?
Assistance.
Homeowner Assistance Program. I mean, that, that program is, is so important, and it's, I think, was it 2.5 is in that? That's, that's it? That's, I mean, that's a, it's a lifeline. That's, that's a family, you know, having a furnace or not, you know? Those, those programs are so important. And often when we get a call, like, the worst calls that we receive in our office, that's usually what we're looking at as, as the solution here. I want to shepherd that, or I want to protect that, you know, kind of. And I think, I think legislatively, I don't, I don't think it'd be really hard for us to touch that anyway. But I, I want to make sure that's something that we, we shield and we protect here. There wasn't really a question there. I just wanted to just kind of say that.
Noted, though.
But the, the, I guess one of the, the questions I've always wondered, and maybe there's a simple answer to this, I just don't know. Why is it that city council pay, or that, that the city pays for URA personnel? That's always a budgeted item. Why is that something that we take on as an expense out of the city?
We're the city's economic development arm. Our board is appointed by the mayor. And that, the personnel budget has been reduced over the past decade. And why is that, you know, why do you fund the URA?
We don't fund Peter Bisse's personnel. We don't.
Well, they also have sustainable revenue. So they have fees. Parking Authority has fees. Who is Housing Authority? Has, they have dedicated revenue from the federal government. We have no dedicated funding source. No dedicated funding source. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
If I may, another note is that we deploy the CDBG dollars, and it, it takes a lot of staff time and expertise to do that. And so we rely on very modest administrative support in order for us to actually get those CDBG dollars, like, deployed in your district, for example.
Okay, this is something I'm be curious about. I wonder, well, I won't be the first one to think about that. But.
If we had a dedicated funding source to support our operational budget, I think we wouldn't come to you for personnel support. Yeah. But we don't have a dedicated funding source.
And every, every different grant and funding source that we have, we put a percentage for operations, so that people can be able to deploy those funds and, you know, fill out the forms and, you know, reports that were, that are required. There's a lot of administrative stuff behind every last grant that we get, you know, audits and different reports that everybody wants to know what we did, but how we did it. So it's a lot of administrative stuff that we have to do. So every grant that we get, we do require or request personnel costs. It's not just the city.
Okay. Well, with that, I, I don't really have much more that I, I want to talk about. I have a lot more that I want to talk to you about, kind of offline, but in front of the air, I just, you know, appreciate all the work and appreciate your partnership and your expertise all throughout the year. And I look forward to continuing to work with you more as, in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Warwick, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for being here and for the nice presentation. Very comprehensive. Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's important to, I'm sort of looking at your housing impact numbers, you know, for, for all of the folks that you support. The, the investment per person is, is pretty affordable from our perspective, right? So, you know, less than 5,000 for housing crisis prevention per person, right? 14, you know, around a little over 14,000 per person for the home accessibility improvements. For the legal assistance, about a thousand dollars per person. So these are really, you know, it's the amount of money for an individual that makes an enormous amount of difference, right? It's like the difference between them being housed or unhoused, right? But in the grand scheme of budget spent on this, that, or the other thing, right, in government, is, the, the numbers are very low. So I think that's important to underscore. You know, overall, looking at the, at the housing preserved, right, whether that's for sale, preserved, for rent, or new, right, whether it's newly created or, or preserved. If you break it down by unit, it's about 43,000 per unit, which again, like, if you're, if you're either creating a new unit, that's not to say that's the entirety of the cost, right? But that is the investment that the city and, you know, the city slash URA are making to, to get those, those homes, either preserve them or, or put them on the market. So, which is not very much, right, in the grand scheme of things, right? So in terms, well, one thing that I did want to ask, because we have, you know, we are, we are hearing these conversations, right, about like Housing Opportunity Fund, and also like the bond, like, well, there's money that's sitting, you know, there's money that's, you know, so for the bond, for example, 20 million is committed, 10 million is closed. So closed, I assume means out the door, right? The money is, and then, so the 10, the 20 million committed, and then 600,000 uncommitted. For the committed and uncommitted, what, what is the revenue, sorry, excuse me, what, what is the interest generated on that for the URA?
I don't know the percentage offhand of what the bank has, but I can get it to you.
So I mean, just, in, so that money's, so let's just say the 20 million is in an account, right, at the URA, and it's generating interest. Is that interest going back into?
Yeah, most of the city, everything, all the funds that the city gives us, any interest in it has to go back into the program. So it doesn't go to the URA. So the URA doesn't touch that. It goes back into the program.
So it goes back into the program?
Right.
And with the, and, well, the bond money I know was all at once, right? Like, you got that, that entire 30 million, or 30.6 million at once, right? For the Housing Opportunity Fund, how is that, and, and that is spent down every year, I understand, right? And is it spent, does it take the whole year to spend it down, or is it spent down?
It's cross-years. It's not, we don't spend the whole 10 million in one year. It's across-years.
And is that because, and, and is that because of, is that the, like, the housing improvement pieces? So what is it that, that is left over from one year to the next?
Sorry, it's Kiana. I could jump in and help answer this one. The reason why the funds, and sorry, I'm not there with you in person. I would have loved to been, but I couldn't, unfortunately. We do not spend the Housing Opportunity Fund down each year because we don't, first off, we don't receive the, actually receive the funds in the bank at the URA from the city until approximately April, May, or June. And I kind of just want to go back and, like, touch on what Councilman Charlin said about spend down, even our CDBG and Home and other funds, from 2025, we are now entering into the cooperation agreement for those funds. And so they'll be available in 2026. And so the, the timing that the funding comes to the URA is a part of the reason why spend down generally across all line items is not happening exactly within that year. And then some of, some for Housing Opportunity Funds, some of the programs have application rounds that we open for those programs at different times throughout the year. And depending, like our Home, Homeowner Assistance Program or half-home repair, it takes, you know, we accept 50 applicants all at one time. We cannot enter into construction with all of them all at one time. It takes time to work through those applications. Also, we're entering into agreement with service providers, specifically for the Legal Assistance Program, as well as the Housing Stabilization Program and Action Housing. And so that just takes time to enter into agreement and do. And then it takes time for them to kind of support the homeowners in need as needed, as people apply to those programs.
So that makes sense. If you were to start the year in April, right? Would, would you get closer to spending it down? Like say, say the year started when the, when the dollars hit the, you know, hit your account? Would you be closer to spending them down in the year? Right, okay, okay. So. I, I just wanted, because this has been, this idea has been floated to me, so I want to ask it at the table, right? I'm not a proponent or not. I just, it was, it was brought to my attention. So just in terms, and this is why I ask about the interest, is one would be to understand how impact, you know, like, how much interest is generated and what is the impact of that interest on the program, right? Like does it, like, would it hurt? So in other words, if the city, for example, on these large transfers were to do, you know, quarterly transfers, like how would that impact the program? Thus then the, the interest from that money would be sitting in our account, not your account, right? That was kind of where, where the line of questioning was going. But then to understand, A, what is the interest, right? How much money are we talking about? And then to understand from your perspective, what impact, if that interest is going back into the program, right? I mean, just like, you know, pick a number from, from, you know, if, if you're, you know, you're helping 313 individuals with housing crisis prevention, right? How much of that, how much of those, how many of those people were helped by the interest versus the, the core, the core investment?
We can follow up with a report for you.
I mean, it does not, I just.
We can model the interest and we can do it on a quarterly basis.
Okay, I mean, I just, the only reason I bring it up, and I'm not, and again, I'm not like a proponent of this or not. It's just that it was something that was, that was asked of me of like, well, what would be a way that we could continue to support the U R A in the same amounts that we have been? But, you know, ease our budget burden and, and that's why, that's why I, I ask.
Yeah, it's creative. Every little bit counts. So we could get that interest modeled for you.
Yeah. The other thing, so for the, for the unfunded and the underfunded pieces, facade repair, childcare investment, small business board. Oh, what is, so the, the Community Development Investment Fund, what is that specifically?
That's neighborhood scale investments. So Tom.
It's basically a gap financing program for real estate development projects in business districts. So it's a, it's a tool to provide a gap, you know, lower, low cost debt or very patient capital into a, into some real estate development in a, in a neighborhood business district. That's our, it's our core source of gap financing.
Oh, I see. Okay. And that was, that got no funding.
That's correct.
This year.
Think 4,800 block built out with street level activation with housing above, think East Ohio Street.
Right.
Yeah.
They need like a $250,000. You know what I'm saying? Like I said, this is just making this up completely. $2 million project.
That kind of stuff.
Equity, debt, other public sources. It needs a last infusion. $200,000 or so. This is a tool we would use for that.
Yeah. I would be curious, and again, just because things are so tight for the city. And I always like to point out our large nonprofits, but for this in particular, right? That's sort of, but for this in particular, I wonder if there isn't a conversation to be had with the foundations, with Heinz Foundation, with R K Mellon, with, right? And others to see if they, if, I mean, what was the ask? Like a million?
Yeah.
I mean, this is really very little money for those organizations. And, and, you know, since they are, a lot of their mission is focused on, right? These types of kind of economic drivers, rather than just like assistance to an individual resident for this, that, or the other, if, if that might not be a conversation to be had there as well. I mean, I just, just because we are in this, this very tight budget. And, yeah, I mean, the, the, the question about the personnel, I had not heard that. I guess I do, I mean, I, I would be wary of, and I understand you do not have revenue, right? So P W S A has revenue, Parking Authority has revenue. They pay their employees out of their revenue. But the U R A does not, and I would worry if you had to generate revenue to pay your employees, then we would start, we would see projects that were really market rate, right? Like the U R A investing, becoming a real estate developer as a, and, which I think maybe in the past it may have been. I don't know, right? Like the mission of the A R, of the U R A seems to have, at least in, in the amount of time that I've kind of been paying attention in my time in Pittsburgh, right? Really seems to have moved more toward revitalization of, of underserved communities. And I think that in a way that preserves housing and, you know what I mean? That, that preserves the, you know, and allows folks to stay in those communities as opposed to kind of like just build it up and, you know, then people get pushed out, right?
That's the trade off.
That's the trade off, right? And that is, and but, but if, if paying for the person, you know, if, if you had to make the most out of every investment, right? Get the most dollars out of, then that would, you know, out of every property sale or out of every whatever in order to pay people, then that would be, I think, a slippery slope to go down if, 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 if that's what you needed to do to pay your employees. So I don't think I have any other questions, you know, as I, I appreciate the work with your office. And, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council President, the floor is yours.
I was saying, similar to Councilman Mosley and the Housing Authority, I get to talk to them on a daily, weekly monthly basis. I already know I have a lot of questions. What I will say though, to the issue of personnel, one, it should be noted that this is the one entity that actually brings in tax revenue for the city. And I take staff in order to be able to do that. Damar, sorry, Director, you had a slide somewhere in the back here. So in 2022, our actual costs were 8 million. We covered 2 million. In 2023, we cup, covered 6 million worth of work. We got paid a little over 2 million. 2024, a little less than 2 million, but 2024 still produced 5 million worth of work. You all may have heard recently that the U R A had to make some cutbacks. And in part is to bring those numbers in alignment. And that's unfortunate because actually going back to Boudou's administration, he really began starting cutting personnel as well as C D B dollars away from the U R A. And for a number, at least for four years, he would make cuts, I would put money back. He would make cuts, I would put money back. But I never put as much back as what was actually cut, right? And so that's how you end up with a system where we're somewhat out of balance. And now having to sort of right size the organization while also in many respects attempting to do more, right? Because all of us collectively, and I'm certainly guilty of this, all have these great ideas of what the U R A could be doing, whether it's as, the Councilman mentioned before, he lived, the importance of his main streets, right? The importance of that work, the importance of the housing and keeping people in their homes that was brought up. The importance of revitalizing downtown, right? Which is a huge lift unto itself. Like all this work takes time, staff, energy and money, but we're not actually providing the support. So, and I understand this year is going to be a challenging year. I do support the Councilmen in wanting to find money to be able to direct back to the main streets. I think that's critical. I think the importance of not funding our C D F I at all is very alarming. Because move beyond just the, the new facades that we're not funding, we also mean that the businesses won't be opening. And if I can go to Tom's slide, from 2022 to 2025, we effectively brought in $577, 577 million in tax revenue. My only question is, does that include housing?
So the 566 million is the assessed value of the real estate in our tax diversion portfolio?
Which you. So, okay.
I think I'm looking at the same slide as you are.
Yes, so, so it wouldn't include the 120 new, I forget the numbers, I'm sorry. The 120 new homes, 126 new homeowners.
No.
That would not be included.
No, that, that's actually a fairly limited number, actually. It's 566, yeah.
But of which, 73, I think are new residents to the city of Pittsburgh, if I, if I remember correctly? So even that is significant. Sure, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a whole lot of money. But 126 new homeowners who are paying taxes, who are paying wage tax, like all those things begin to add up. And so I'm just making the argument that if there were ever an entity that we would need to scrape the bottom of the barrels to find money for, it would be this one. Because they are the one entity that's actually helping to revitalize neighborhoods in conjunction with the Housing Authority at times. So I don't want to discredit the work that they've been able to do to help us pull some of this off. But they have federal funding, right? The U R A does not. And so if there were ever an entity, and again, per my standard, I'll try to scrape the bottom of the barrel, $5,000 to support you all. But I just wanted to sort of make that clear because I also get the same question about, but why are we paying for them? Because they, you are Economic Development Agency. You are the one growing the tax base of the city. Probably for the first time in a couple of decades, actually. So thank you for your work. Again, that's more of a diatribe than a question. Feel free to respond if you want to. But I just thought it was important to speak to that.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Gross is still online. The floor is yours.
I'm here. Sound you, thank you. Appreciate, I apologize for moving. I'm talking to you on a tiny phone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you fine. We can hear you answer you.
Wonderful. I appreciate it. So I've been taking lots of notes while listening. Fortunately, I don't think I got the slides emailed, but I was able to kind of capture and, and see some of them. But I'm gonna probably have to ask that for you to repeat some of the numbers or go back to a slide so that I can, so I can catch some of the details. So I, I'll chime in on the notes about personnel, just to verify kind of the, the, the funding streams that I know of, right? So what I've taught was that this, the proposed budget that's in front of us now has 750,000.
Correct.
For the U R A, for personnel in the capital budget. Is that, did I guess that right?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And then also though, isn't it also true that in the 10 million that we send you for the Housing Opportunity Fund, 15% of each year's allocation goes to the U R A for personnel?
For each year of the H O F funding, we get a million dollars.
10%.
So it's only 10% that you're taking?
Correct.
That's good to know. Okay, so that's 1 million dollars. And is that restricted to just the, the Housing Opportunity Fund administration?
Can you repeat your question?
Sorry, is that 1 million for personnel from the H O F restricted to administering that program?
Yes, it's just for the H O F program.
Yeah. And then I've got some maybe clarifications that I won't drill down into about like how the, I think that it, the C D B G maybe also, do you take C D B G administration funding straight out of the C D B G appropriation as well?
We do not.
No, okay. So that, that would have to come from the 750 that's in the capital budget separately from the C D B G?
So in the capital budget, we have 575, I believe, from Pago and 175 from C D B G this year.
For personnel?
For personnel.
And that adds up to 750,000. So that's that total. Okay. It's just that total breaks out?
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful. Sorry, again, it was hard to follow and I don't have the budget memorized. So, okay, so I'm just gonna like leave that there. And I, I do concur with my colleagues that I think mostly what we heard from public comment this week and what we heard, what I took away from your presentation, is that we shouldn't kind of categorically stop funding small business investments. And so I am concerned about that as well. I have been saying now for several years that we've spent, you know, 12 years that I've been on council talking about affordable housing because we know that we have residential cost pressures and residential gentrification. But we also need to talk about the commercial gentrification and the cost pressures on our, our main streets, right? I know that as Councilman Charlin said, most of us do have main streets. And as Councilman LeVell says, it's really important to also have those kind of neighborhood services and brickstone worker providers to have a healthy neighborhood. But those main streets and those residential corridors, some of them are under intense gentrification pressure. Some of them are not. Some of them are disinvested and suffering from blight and abandonment. And I know everyone at the U R A has heard me give this speech before, or many of you at least, but I gave up an official speech to the State House Democrats Policy Committee when our county executive Sarah Marada was the state representative that overlaps with my district. And I, I spoke about how I think it's the rightful role of local government to moderate the parts of the market that are broken. And for decades that we have created policies and procedures and budget lines to support blight and abandonment and disinvestment, rightfully so. And we should continue to do so. And I consider that being local government investing in, helping, you know, moderate the extremes of the market, which is the broken end of the market. But the, the flip side is also true. And I believe that hyperinvestment and displacement, displacement and gentrification is also the market being broken and not creating healthy neighborhoods. And that it is rightful for local government to moderate both market extremes. And so I think we need some markets correction where we have overinvestment of blight. Otherwise, we are just allowing and enabling what people call playgrounds for the rich. And I don't believe that that is what we want to do. I don't believe that's healthy for the city. Because if you, if you create and allow and enable or neglect to correct hyperinvestment and gentrification, you, and, you know, concentrated wealth, you're allowing concentrated poverty. That's my discontent. So anyway, I'm supportive of investing as well in our commercial corridors. And I, I think that either I missed in the presentation, although I was here on Zoom, the acknowledgement of the phenomenal success that you have participated in creating more than 1,000 minutes of affordable housing. Do you want to pull that slide back up and revisit that for us? Because I, I want to make sure that we spend a minute there. I, I was trying to find myself that housing affordable dashboard, affordable housing dashboard, to see if it's been updated. But I was unable to juggle it between my phone and my, my laptop here at home. Do you have that on your slides?
Yes, we just pulled up the Affordable Housing Impact slide. Can you see that?
Maybe if I, sorry, I'm gonna touch my screens. I'm gonna turn my camera off so I can kind of float around on my phone and see if I can find it.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I am zooming in on that. I am zooming in on that. And, um, so it's got seven hundred and thirty three affordable units, up to eighty percent A M I. And is this just one year? I kind of can't, oh yeah, it's just twenty twenty four.
Right.
So that is just in one year. So what was, uh, what was twenty twenty three? Does anybody remember?
We can, we can get that from our impact slide, so, um, just if you give us just a little bit, I'll pull it up on my phone. And I think Kiana
Um, yeah, I can relate, this is like what we all do at the tables, try to look things up on our phones. So, um, you know, what we're doing, or what you are doing, I'm gonna say, is working. Um, I think it's, it's being effective. Um, we do, I, I do want to argue for that, again, the kind of affordable housing achievements, that I do think there's some areas where we could have done better. Um, and if we do it again, I want to make sure we don't do it the same way. Again, we may agree, we can not agree, but the, um, you know, I voted to support the sixty two and a half million dollars for the Affordable Housing Bond. And, but I just have to note for the record that we only got thirty point six million on the market. Um, I feel like doing it as a municipal bond, as a, as a non-taxable bond would have been more money. And other places are doing it that way, and I, I think we were all, some of us were in the room with the, um, session at the P C R G, um, uh, summit this year in twenty twenty five with Zachary Marks from the Enterprise Fund, who's of Montgomery County, Maryland. Which we all think was a, a model for what becomes the closest to the social housing in the U S. So I wanted to ask you next here if you had any thoughts on that.
I think it's a really interesting model, and I, I see the Housing Authority, uh, potentially taking on that model with us in a support role. It's, it's, um, yeah, I, I remember his presentation and I did think that, um, you know, given the Housing Authority's significant federal investment support, I think that that would be a pretty interesting model.
Well, I have two takeaways. Uh, we were, again, we were on the same, at the same time in a kind of smaller conversation. Um, I just think, remember, Kyle was there, Susan Tilopoli was chair of the board at the time, um, I don't seem here today. And, um, and Sushilidya were there, and a few others. Um, that make sure your bond, your kind of loan funds revolve was one takeaway, and the second one was, don't sell your land. Um, and so I had some conversations with Councilwoman LeVell where I suggested that we shouldn't sell, for example, the U R A should not actually sell for, to developers, for like the Lower Hill. Um, and I have asked the same of some of the properties in my district that the U R A has owned. Um, to just put them on ground leases, put them on ninety nine year leases, which are de facto sales, so they still generate taxes. But that the city or the U R A remains the landlord. Uh, and this is something that they are doing in other places, they've definitely done them in Montgomery County, Maryland. There's opportunity there, I think, for rental income, it also makes it a little cheaper on the developer's side, whether that's a nonprofit partner like Action Housing. I, I asked that Knoxville Ross Street building, for example, right, that was, um, used to be cooperatively owned by the three, by the two authorities and the city. Um, and then was moved entirely to the U R A and then was sold. Not that I don't admire and respect the work that Action Housing is doing, have full faith in what they're doing. But I still feel on principle that we should be moving towards a model where we retain ownership of the land. I don't know if you'd like to respond to that.
Yeah, we've, we've had this conversation a few times and given our inability to sustain a, um, a land maintenance fund, a property reserve.
I don't believe that a three hundred unit apartment building on a ground lease would rely on the U R A for property management and landscaping. So maybe you've misunderstood my question, I'll, I'll elaborate. The three, three hundred unit buildings, so the nine hundred units of apartments, three separate buildings that are on the riverfront um, behind the produce terminal, that are, um, in the forty five acre S P district owned by a bunch of corporation. Um, were built all in the last, let's say, six, seven years, and they're about thirty million dollars each. Uh, but in each one, the bunch of company did not sell them the land under the building. So the bunch of company retained ownership of its property that it's had since like nineteen seventy two. Um, and sold just a ground lease, right? Put the, put the developer on a ground lease, the developer spent thirty million dollars, sold a three hundred unit apartment building. I think the U R A should do that. Um, which is not the same thing as kind of like, you know, maintaining unwanted parcels and mowing overgrown grass.
Yeah, happy to talk, happy to talk through any model with you on a particular piece of property.
I, I, I would love to talk about the Lower Hill District, I mean, to the parcels that the U R A owns. Not here, not now, but I've asked Councilwoman LeVell the same question. And I would suggest that it is, um, a model that will result in, um, as we've seen in other places, has resulted in more secure, uh, results, like, you know, results that are more predictable. Um, in affordable units, so that's, that's the goal, right? That it is, um, less speculative on what the outcomes for the site will be. So I'll just, I'll leave it there. Um, and then also, well, I'll leave it there, so Sixty Second Street is another site in my district that we know it has had many, many community visions. And I know it has been challenging for the U R A and, um, and its goal in the last twelve years that I've been in office, the goal of the U R A has been to sell the property to a developer that has been challenging, so we will definitely follow up on that one. Um, and talk about maybe other models, um, that can work to help the U R A achieve its goals and also achieve community goals. Um, I'd like to jump to another topic, which is, um, related to the small business conversation. Which is that I noticed that there was a request for the childcare program that I've been lobbying for, for many years. And I thought you did a fabulous job at implementing, it was like twenty seventeen, maybe twenty sixteen, when, um, uh, City Council commissioned, um, both a study on childcare and, um, allocations for childcare set aside in the budget. Um, it's happened to be a co-sponsor on those items. Um, and then we did move funding over to the U R A right before COVID in the twenty nineteen budget discussions, um, like this one in December twenty nineteen. I saw in the U R A's budget report that you had been doing micro lending. And I was excited by that, because a lot of childcare providers are actually small providers, um, and need a lot more handholding in their lending. And it's a very particular industry niche, so we worked together, we had meetings in January of twenty twenty. I gave you all of the nineteen nineties materials on childcare lending from C D F I that I had worked at. And the U R A developed its own manual for how to create childcare, based on the manual from North Carolina in nineteen ninety five of how to create and start your childcare business. Um, partnered with CHA, which is great, did lending to childcare businesses. And I see that that program is not receiving the funding requests that you requested. Would you like to talk about, a little bit about where that program is? I think it is incredibly valuable. There are parents at all income levels on multi-year waiting lists for childcare centers and it's, uh, these are entrepreneurs, these are bricks and mortar businesses, and you got quality childcare for children. So I'll, I'll stop talking, thank you.
Thank you so much, I really just appreciate your commitment to childcare and our robust conversations we've had about this over the years. Uh, my colleague Rebecca Davidson Wagner is also on, and she runs, um, Invest Pittsburgh, which is our C D F I, our community, community development, um, financial institution that we house the Crib program in, which is the childcare reinvestment in business lending. Uh, Becky, I see your, your poison ready to jump in here, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely, um, yeah, we continue to run the Crib program, which is a twenty thousand dollar forgivable loan, um, opportunity for childcare businesses. In addition, we do have a micro lending as well, uh, which supports businesses that aren't licensed yet, the Crib program is for licensed businesses. And then coupled with that, we are still partnering with Chadon Women Business Enterprise to run their business of childcare cohorts, which are eight week, um, specific, uh, childcare business support program, um, educational cohorts. Uh, they actually just finished their fall cohort, um, and I think they're gonna plan to do spring as well. So the program is still running, but it, it does have an endpoint. The forgivable loan program, as you know, we don't get that money back, we forgive, we forgive the loan once we, uh, once we administer it. Um, so yeah, the funding really was to help continue that program going forward. I think in the short term, we can, we're gonna continue it, uh, but in order to have that sustainability, having that funding source would have been helpful.
And something that I want to note is, um, a stat I'm very excited about and proud about is we've created over a hundred and thirty one new childcare seats um, because of this program, we've tracked when we've invested in, um, our, our childcare providers, and then a year later, when they seek loan forgiveness, of how many new seats they've been able to provide. And as you know, this, you know, the industry was decimated during COVID. Critical to working parents is reliable and quality childcare. Um, healthy economies rely on quality childcare, to keep women in the workforce relies on quality childcare. The U R A has carved out a really interesting position in this market, and I'm proud of what we've done here, and we will continue to seek additional, uh, resources in this space, and we'll continue to ask the city for, for investment in this space too.
Great, great, thank you, exactly, so, um, yes, I've been kind of advocating for this again, since I worked at a C D F I like this in the, in the nineteen nineties, um, with this model of treating childcare businesses as, um, actual businesses and not, you know, relying on an economic development model that's just about like tech or like big businesses. But it is important when we talk about our small, locally owned businesses and women owned businesses, that about ninety percent of these businesses are women owned businesses. I don't know what your exact statistics are, but that's another, another thing that I think council members and the public should understand. And a significant portion of them, in my experience, are minority, um, owned businesses and minority women owned businesses. Um, and also for my colleagues, parents and families want to live near their childcare provider. So either you, there's two preferential options, either you really have the childcare provider near where you live or near your workplace. Um, and so when you're looking at sort of disinvested neighborhoods in the city, um, I would suggest that, um, while we always talk about food, and we always talk about transit, that they are critical, that also one of the legs of this, imagine like a stool, uh, that you would sit on that's three legged, so you want to keep it in balance, um, is childcare. Right, and we know that those are the cost burdens on our lower income households in the city of Pittsburgh, we know this from lots of different sets of research. That rent and transit, mobility, but childcare, sometimes childcare is as much of a cost burden as rent. And that is what kind of drives homes, you know, households to be housing unstable or, you know, puts, puts burdens on um, households that unfortunately sometimes drives them outside of the city. Um, so it's really critical that we continue this program, let alone the fact that we've built up the capacity, the knowledge base. This is kind of specialized knowledge, because there's so many regulatory levels, um, right? So you've got the county regulations to meet, and you've got state regulations to meet, and having that in-house, and I see your, your, your nodding your head, has been a labor of love. I am so grateful that you have built up this capacity at the U R A. And again, just to frame this, right, the importance for my colleagues and for the public. Since COVID, at one point enough, I haven't looked up the more recent numbers, but about a year or two ago, I was saying, uh, that the number that we saw from the state was that the state of Pennsylvania, statewide, fifty thousand childcare seats were lost because those businesses went under. But because of this program with the U R A, we didn't lose those seats and then we gained seats, right? So we not only gained seats, so we're like a this outlier in the state of Pennsylvania because of this program. And because City Council's funding for it. Um, but that we also increased wages and stabilized and created new programs. So again, I, I just, I, I, I'm glad we spent some time, um, talking about it. I'm gonna be pushing for funding for this program. I think it's really critically important, again, we have, we know from empirical research and multiple studies of the city of Pittsburgh, that this is important for every single income level. It doesn't matter if you're an engineer or you're, uh, struggling, female headed household, single house, you know, single parent household. Uh, that people are struggling with access to quality childcare, um, and we can do better. So, thank you all, I'll, I'll leave that now. Last thing, Mr. Chair, that I want to have a little more time on is, um, to maybe go back to the numbers on evictions. I think this is also really critically important, again, funding that City Council set aside. Um, not only in the H O F, but we've set aside new funding to expand the, I think it's the, I'm not sure all the acronyms. It's Housing Assistance Program, but also Lawyer of the Day Program. Um, council members will remember our discussions on it, that we want to see this program expanded to all magisterial districts, because we know that evictions happen some in higher, in some neighborhoods than others, but they happen all across the city, especially where we have aggressive real estate L L Cs flipping and, you know, renovating and evicting people. So we, we know that we can keep people in the city if they don't lose their housing by eviction. We also know that it's better for our city kids, because there's a significant portion of them that are moving three, four, five times a school year, and that if they're not going through evictions, that they're better off. We also know that some of those evictions are legal evictions. But if that, our residents don't have a lawyer and the landlord does have a lawyer, that it, the, the tenants lose the eviction case. So, um, this has been a great program, and I think you had some numbers that I missed. Can you go back to those or read those again for me?
Absolutely, in the Housing Crisis and Prevention Assistance Program, our twenty twenty four numbers, our three hundred and thirteen individuals assisted with a little over one point four million dollars invested. And Kiana, I think we're on track to meet or exceed that in twenty twenty five, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. Um, to date, Q one through Q three in twenty twenty five, I think we've assisted four, approximately four hundred and eighty one households um, through, with, uh, one point four million dollars in funding for legal assistance program. And so this is a key, critical program to keeping, um, our families housed in the city, and we appreciate your support, Councilwoman President Gross.
Thank you, so together, that's eight hundred households. Um, and so we don't know how many kids that affects. Uh, the last time I got a kind of breakdown of those demographics, it was like eighty percent were female headed households with children in the home. I'm not sure how that's been looking, um, in the past year. Um, so do you have any, do you have any information at your fingertips?
Not at my fingertips, but we will definitely, um, follow up with you on what's that data.
Right, and we know that, um, the kind of newer, like the the trends in the cases, unfortunately, was also seniors, uh, which we saw, we can also see, um, similar outcomes, but we know that it's seniors that are, are increasing, um, trending upward portion of our unhoused population. And so this is really distressing. Um, as I said last year, um, I don't think we had new cases, this year, thank goodness. But it was really striking to me that I had two different, like, grandmas who, um, were nearly evicted, one in Bloemfield and one in Morningside and in twenty twenty four, um, who had lived at the, you know, in the neighborhoods for, for decades, for their adult lives. Um, but because of rent evictions, right, their houses being purchased, the, um, the rental units being eliminated and then being evicted, um, it really took a lot of work for us, um, to prevent them from actually hitting the outdoors. Um, it was really scary for everybody involved, so I, I really think we need to make sure that we're funding this across the city. Again, the, the city has reallocated funds, we allocate an additional two an additional $2 million so we could expand past the, it was restricted to four magisterial districts. And I believe for the 481 households that were stabilized, you know, that was maybe, I'm guessing, that was maybe 600 or 700 cases that were handled, maybe less, because there's pretty high success rate. But there's probably 1,000 more that we weren't able to take as cases. Do you have any numbers on how many evictions we weren't able to assist?
Unfortunately, I don't. I do think that when we come to the table next week to talk about the Housing Opportunity Fund, we can ask our partners, our Legal Assistance Provider Partners to attend or provide some, you know, comment or data around these items for you. So happy to get that data for you and talk more about it next week.
Thank you. Just to close out, we know from census data that we gained wealthy residents in the 10 years between 2010 and 2020. And our population loss was over lower income residents. So while we all talk about trying to increase the city population and grow the city, which is appropriate, and I support, because we were, our built-in environment and our infrastructure is costly to maintain. And if we had double the people to maintain it, it would be half as expensive for each of us. And, but we need to really talk about creating the correct public policies to achieve that population growth. And I think supporting our and preventing the kind of market displacement of the just evictions of our lower income households is a fantastic investment. Again, because we know some of these, from looking carefully, people who are tracking this and working with these evictions, that many of them are so successful and provide legal assistance because there really aren't legal evictions. I'll put in one last plug if you'd like to respond. I'm afraid that the $2 million that city council allocated to expand this program hasn't actually moved into the program yet. Is that correct? Is the co-op agreement still not signed?
The co-op agreement, I believe, is signed between the city and the URA. We are attempting to, we're having a new partnership this year. And so we're working with Alleghen County DHS to be the kind of main service convener, since legal assistance fits in with the work they're doing around rental assistance and housing stability in regards to homelessness. And so DHS is partnering with us. We are not under agreement with DHS yet. However, we're actively working towards that and definitely will be under agreement within the next couple of weeks. So the $2 million in Stop the Violence funding that has been allocated to the URA for this work, as well as the HOFF funds are, will be in agree, will go to DHS. And that's the agreement that we're working on for both funds.
Okay. I know that the city, because we've had to vote alone, has created its own cooperation agreements directly with DHS. We did that for the mayor's childcare funding, which was a separate pot of money than the URA childcare funding that city council appropriated many years ago. So if that helps it move faster, then I say, like, we'll just, we don't need the URA, which is bait in the co-op agreement. If the city could just take the $2 million and do it directly. Whatever moves this money faster is what should be done. Because it needs to get to the provider so it can get to the people facing evictions. I've had this year constituents rejected from this assistance because they're, it's almost too low. And I know that there is a constraint now on the program parameters. And I think that's probably due to the fact that the dollars are constrained. So I'm concerned about that. I want this program to reach more people, not fewer people. Okay. I think that's, trying to get back to my notes, that again, this is a lot of programming. I want to acknowledge that the URA has a lot of things. Sometimes I am worried that we throw every policy idea at the URA, and it's just like this kitchen sink, like it just keeps filling up with every policy idea that the city has. And I think we should question ourselves as members, I feel like I've said this for the last couple of years, we should question ourselves as council members. When we have an economic development or housing policy idea, does it actually have to go to the URA? Because you already have a lot of assignments, things that we have assigned to you to do. So I'll leave it there. If you have any questions or comments, or that'll be all for me, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I really don't have any questions. I think the other members have asked any question that comes to mind. And even though I'm not on the board, you know, of the URA, you know, as a chair of the committee, and as, you know, district where a lot of the reinvestment activity that the URA is focused on, we meet on a monthly basis. Regardless, I just want to thank you for your ongoing partnership and all of the myriad of things we've worked on together for a little shorter of two years, from Lexington Tech to Homewood Avenue, to most recently, you know, congratulations on christening the newest public space in the city, Broad Street Plaza. That was a great celebration that we had last Friday. It's just an example of the things that we've worked on together. Only thing I did want to just echo, you know, the concern as well as the support, you know, for the investment in business districts. Clearly, you know, I think about Homewood Avenue and Lincoln Avenue, Alamo Avenue, in particular in my district, but even Penn Avenue that I share with Councilwoman Gross, which is obviously a much different space than Lincoln Avenue, Alamo Avenue, and Homewood Avenue. But, you know, one of the things that I know me and Councilwoman Gross have talked significantly about is, you know, preserving that unique character, you know, of Penn Avenue and not going on Penn Avenue and Garfield and Friendship one day. And it just looks like, you know, a cookie cutter, you know, business district anywhere in America, but preserving that unique character, but also investing, you know, in those business district that, as Councilwoman Gross has so eloquently said, have been disinvested in. You know, you can't have a prosperous, safe, and vibrant community without a strong business district. So as Councilwoman Gross said, like, as much as we've been laser focused, you know, on the importance of the housing crisis and the affordability crisis, you know, we need to have that same, you know, laser focus on, you know, creating those amenities, you know, in those communities, because you can have, you know, as much, you know, affordable housing as well as typology of housing across the board and price point. But if you don't have that business district, you know, it's not going to be as competitive as a community that has that same inventory of housing typologies without that business district. And you're always going to go to the one, you know, that has those amenities within walking distance or within a short drive. So I share that, that, you know, that concern. And I do want to also announce that we've been, you know, joined by our esteemed colleague from South of the River. Actually, he used to be my councilman at one time, I believe. I think you've been on council long enough now that, but, you know, I am a former Brookline.
A piece of the heart of the South.
Yeah, I'm a former Brookline. For a number of years, I lived in Brookline. But we are joined by Anthony Coghill as well. And I'm going to offer to floor to you, I don't know if you have any questions or any comments that you want to add before we close.
Me now? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your kind words. So I just first want to say thank you for the work you do. You do valuable, very important work. Secondly, I want to say, you know, with the URA, I had probably my worst day when you informed me that we didn't get the Lytech grants last year. And my best day this year when we did get them. So thank you for sticking it out. And I'm glad that the company, this is about a development in Carrick that we have. It's really a game changer on Brownsville Road, a big time, you know. So, you know, it couldn't have been more related, of course, as you know. And I'm so glad the company who originally signed up to develop, I don't know, was it the developer or the, was it CHN?
That's correct, yes.
They're the developer, yeah. And they stuck it out, you know, they were also, we were all disappointed. The community was disappointed last year. But you said, you know, to me, I remember you saying to me, it's very rarely there's a first time applicants get it, even though we were optimistic last year. But this year, it was just such a breath of fresh air. And, you know, we were up in Carrick just the other day, and CHN was there, some representatives were there for them, and the community was there. And they kind of had already figured the news. And I know we're meeting after this, at least two of us, I don't know how many of you are. But, and I just wanted to say thank you for the work you do. And thank you for seeing that project through, because it's a go now. And again, and I'm thankful that I was reelected, so I get to see it come to fruition. I hope so anyway, four years, and I don't know, you think we'll have this thing built in four years?
Yes. I think three years is probably a good timeline. Yeah. So, and we plan to fill the funding gap for the Lytech with HOFF money from RGP Rental Gap. So keep that on your radar as you think through the Housing Opportunity Fund allocation plan next week.
Gotcha. Perfect, perfect. And let me, was it, did we talk about, no, I was talking to CHN, the representative there. I just popped in the meeting for a few minutes and just to spread the good news, you know. And, you know, I remarked about like how we were going to try to have it demoed, you know, in advance. But he said, he said, okay, he said, but make sure that they coordinate with us, because you know, there's things. And I said, absolutely. I said, that's all with the URA and the folks there. I said, I'm sure they will, I said, we're not just going to knock it down. So where are we on that? Like, I guess, is it like, are we still going to try to demo that in advance?
I think we have a meeting coming up to discuss the timing of that, because we want to make sure we're doing what we should be doing in lockstep with PHFA and their requirements.
Yeah, with their specs and, yeah.
Correct, right, right.
We did have that meeting, Councilman. Sorry, she loves jumping in here to support. We recently had a meeting with PHFA, many different parties at the city, including OMB, planning, and other departments, the developer, as well as PHFA, to discuss the demolition of the property. Just so you're aware, there will be federal funding, funding in the project from the housing authority. And because of that, we will have to make sure that we complete some processes for federal funding before we start any work at the site. So that could delay demolition, four to six months. But we are trying to get those processes started now regarding the federal funding, so that we can demo as soon as possible. So just so everyone's kind of in the loop on wanting to get it demoed quickly. We understand it's a health and safety hazard for the community. And we also want to get it moving quickly. So we are working on an expeditions demo, but it could take potentially four to six months to get through our federal process before we can start the demolition process.
That is more than reasonable. I appreciate that update. And that'll put us in maybe next summer, which will be a good time to demo it. And yeah, I can't tell you how thrilled we are about this project. I have a few big projects under my belt, but none bigger than this one since my tenure here. So I'm really looking forward to that.
Yeah, we are, too.
So I just wanted to come out and acknowledge that and thank you for your work that you've done on that. The other thing was, I've seen you've had some advocates lately come down in front of council and have been pushing for, you know, so, and I know we didn't, we'll probably talk in more detail maybe when we go back to my office. But somebody said something about $2 million. What exactly was the ask?
Yes, the request is to preserve the housing funding that's currently in the budget, but $1 million for small business support, that's for 90 neighborhoods. That's an increase from the $100,000 that's in right now. And $1 million for neighborhood scale development. So the, what was the program?
Yeah, it's Community Development Investment Fund.
Yeah, thank you.
So this is not new monies? You're searching for new monies?
We're searching for new money.
Okay, so this is not a transfer from monies that...
We're searching for, yes, a balanced economic development budget, which, which basically increases small business support from 100,000 for 90 neighborhoods to 1 million for 90 neighborhoods, and neighborhood scale development from zero to 1 million.
Well, I appreciate your bold ask at this juncture in the city. And I know that our president will do everything he can to try to make that happen. But, no, that's good. So yeah, I just wasn't sure if it was like new monies or, yeah, right, right. So, have you found anything yet there, Mr. President?
He's working on it. Thank you.
Well, so are eight others digging. But he's got a little bigger stick. So, you know, and everybody knows the good work you do. You know, again, I couldn't be more happy with the work that you've done. So, and then the other, only other thing I have really is, of the federal ARPA money, it's all expired. It's all done. It's all spent.
Yeah.
No.
Under contract.
Okay, under contract.
Right, and/or deployed, that's right.
By the end of '26, is that right?
That's correct.
Got it. All on schedule to spend.
On schedule.
How much is in there? Do we know?
I don't know the exact amount, but I can get it.
Can't we transfer a couple million from that?
We can follow up with the ARPA report.
Is that not legal or?
There's no transferring allowable at this time.
Understood. That's, yeah, I don't know. I was just, yeah, because that would be a good way to get 2 million bucks back in the coffers for the things that you know that we need in our business districts.
Yeah, yeah. And you missed our presentation, our slide around what are investment yields in terms of real estate taxes. But we're roughly around at, you know, for every dollar, we see 10 million leveraged, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it for me. I really just wanted to come out and thank you for the work you do. And again, specifically Brownsville Road and Burke Place Project.
Thanks for your support.
Yep, you got it.
Do members have any other questions? If there are no other questions, can I have a motion to recess this meeting?
Second.
This meeting is recessed, and we will be reconvening in about 12 minutes with Pittsburgh Water and the Pittsburgh Army. Thank you, everyone.